We ready, Jennifer? Okay. All right. Good evening. The time is 7:06 PM. It is Tuesday, February 18th, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge is-
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the City Secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell.
Here.
Coach.
Here.
Ellison.
Present.
Shields.
Here.
Rizzo.
Here.
Vialobos.
Present.
Tobias.
Here.
All right, seven members present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor motioned to approve the minutes for September 24th and September 30th.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Ellison, seconded by Councilmember Vialobos. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item, to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, that you direct those comments to the mayor and council, and that you submit a citizen comments form to either myself or the City Secretary. I have three signed up. First up, Ms. Lila Knight.
Good evening. My name is Lila Knight. I have several things to talk to you about this evening. First off, once again, you're attempting to appoint, for a second time, the brother-in-law of Rick Coach to the Planning and Zoning Commission. More and more, it seems that this city council is omitting planning and zoning from the decision-making process. It seems we have moved from cronyism to nepotism. Neither is acceptable, and neither should be tolerated. It's been my experience that more often than not currently, planning and zoning listens to the concerns of the people. You don't always. Then, I'm concerned about your moving, your determination of our population being 50,000 and extending our ETJ. And I have mainly just questions about that. You're using an average family size of 3.51 from the 2010 census, but the average household size was 3.15. And I don't understand the difference between family size versus household size. Also, I'm not sure how many currently vacant units we have and houses in the city, but I would think that that probably would matter. And, of course, our median age is dropping, and younger people are spending more time being single. Since you're using data from the 2010 census, have you considered that in 2010, only 54.2% of households had children, and 21% were individuals living alone? And I've also interested to know whether or not you've notified Hayes County about your expanding the ETJ, or if you've considered contacting any of the individual property owners who will now be in the Kyle ETJ, including several neighborhoods. I'm also wondering, what's the big rush here? This is the 2020 census year. So, we will have hard figures in literally months. Why not just wait until the 2020 census becomes available and we can actually get an accurate count? And then, my last question is, if the 2020 U.S. Census results are less than 50,000, does the, will the city be required to pull back our ETJ from what you might expand it to?
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Bowingo.
Good evening. My name is Bowingo, and I live at 1237 Water Park Road in Wimberly, Texas. I have to say, I'm quite surprised to be here speaking with you this evening. I always assumed that when I spoke to city council to oppose extraterritorial jurisdiction and ultimately annexation, that I would be speaking to the Wimberly City Council. I had no idea that it would be Kyle that came knocking on my back door. I say Wimberly City Council because that's really just what would make sense in my situation. The entrance and exit to our neighborhood, River Mountain Ranch, is on Ranch Road 3237. Our county commissioner is Lon Shell of Precinct 3. Our constable is Ray Helm of Precinct 3. Our justice of the peace is Andrew Cable of Precinct 3. If I'm not mistaken, no part of Kyle is in Precinct 3. Our address is Wimberly, Texas. Our kids attend Wimberly ISD. When we run into town, we're headed to Wimberly. By road, my home is 10 and 1/2 miles closer to Wimberly's nearest city limit than it is to Kyle's. When I leave here this evening, I have a 35-minute drive home. It is true that River Mountain Ranch neighborhood is technically inside a 3 and 1/2-mile buffer around the Kyle city limits, but that is only after the annexation of the currently uninhabited 3,000-acre Nance tract to the west of Kyle. Our neighborhood, though, our town, is Wimberly. It just doesn't make sense for our neighborhood to be in Kyle's ETJ. No offense to you fine folks, but I don't want to be a part of Kyle. Please don't extend your ETJ out and gobble us up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up. I'm sorry, Bill. I don't, I can't. Is it Hager?
Hazer.
Hazer. Sorry about that.
No problem. I'm here to support Beau. I am also from River Mountain Ranch, and I wanted to echo his comments.
Thank you. Those are the only three comments forms that I have. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments period. It is now closed. Next up, Agenda Item Number Three, Presentation, Black History Month City Council Proclamation. Councilmember Ellison. It's on your, it should be on your. Oh, I'm sorry. I put it there, and then I took it back.
All right. Thank you. So, before I read this very lengthy proclamation that got away from me as I was writing it, I just wanted to state that, one, it's an honor for me to write this now for a third year in a row for the city of Kyle. That's the longest stretch that we've had Black History Month proclamation in the city, as far as I'm aware of, being consistently adopted. And so, it's an honor to do this. I will say, I'll hold accountability for not getting it on our first meeting, but I found, I was able to consult with some folks and come up with a solution that I think was pretty nice, and as well as, you know, at the end of the day, recognizing cultures, all cultures, not just black culture, but all cultures year-round is important, and to understand the contributions and appreciate the contributions to our society as a whole. So, with that being said, bear with me as I read this. "City of Kyle, City Council Proclamation. Whereas in 1926, Dr. Carter G. Woodson initiated the celebration of Negro History Week, which corresponded with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. In 1976, this celebration was expanded to include the entire month of February. And today, Black History Month garners support throughout the country as people of all ethnic and social backgrounds discuss the black experience. And whereas the city of Kyle takes pride in its African-American heritage, which throughout our nation's history has shown examples of both subtle and forthright threads in the fabric that is the United States of America. This can be seen in Kyle within its entire scale of history, from the enslaved people at its founding to the courageous freedmen who settled in this area, and from the early traders representing business in Kyle to those who have served and represented this growing community in various public offices. And whereas, the city of Kyle encourages the preservation of our African-American history and applauds the efforts of groups such as the Hayes County Historical Commission, as well as individuals such as Ollie Giles, Wynton Porterfield, and Jean Bagwell in helping preserve, restore, maintain Kyle's former African-American cemetery, now known as the Kyle Family Pioneer Cemetery, and being recognized as an official historical Texas cemetery. And whereas, the city of Kyle appreciates and applauds the many significant contributions and sacrifices made to the city by community and civic-minded individuals that also happen to be of African-American descent. And whereas, the year 2020 marks the centennial of the 19th Amendment and the culmination of the women's suffrage movement. This year also marks the sescentennial, which means 150 years, of the 15th Amendment in 1870, and the right of black men's constitutional right to participate at the ballot after the Civil Ri, after the Civil War. The theme, African-Americans and the Vote, chosen each year by the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, speaks to the past and ongoing struggle on the part of both black men and women for the right to vote. And therefore, be it proclaimed by the city of Kyle that the 30 days of February 18th through March 18th should be celebrated as Black History Month in appreciation of the many achievements of Kyle's African-American community and in celebration of the 2020 national theme commemorating African-Americans and the vote. Signed and entered this 18th day of February 2020 by the Kyle City Council." I'd like to thank my colleagues for the support on this proclamation, as well as their efforts to write other proclamations we do throughout the years. This is, I've been watching council for a long time now, nearly 10 years, and this is probably the most I've seen kind of proclamations and resolutions by the council on cultural recognition. So, I'm thankful for that opportunity, and I certainly appreciate this opportunity to write these proclamations and read them before you. Unless someone else had something to say, I was going to invite whomever would want to join us at the front for a picture with our Black History Proclamation.
Any other comments?
Sure. I think it's a, it's an awesome time in my life and through my raising and growing up that we can act, we have a council, we have an environment, we have a city that appreciates the cultural competency and diversity of our community. Not only do we appreciate it, but we are loud and proud when we bring forth proclamations, when we recognize the efforts of all of us that make this community great. I appreciate that. I appreciate your efforts, Councilmember Ellison, and I appreciate the deep and the legacy of culture in our community. And thank you very much to my colleagues for giving us the opportunity and supporting our opportunities to recognize the deep and rich culture that we have in the city of Kyle.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Anyone who'd like to join us for our Black History Month picture, please step forward and join us.
Okay, I'm just getting around so I can get everybody.
Oh, okay. You know it's good, but we gotta take that around.
That's right. Okay. Okay. Okay.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Presidential George Washington Day Proclamation. I sponsored this item. I'll be the first to admit that I did not write it, so I cannot take the same credit as Councilmember Ellison, but it is very well-written, and we have a wonderful representative of the, I'm going to say the name of the, Sons of the, Sons of the American Revolution? Did I get that right?
Right.
To come and receive this proclamation, I'm, go ahead and read it now. This is related to George Washington. "Whereas the United States of America was established following the War of Revolution from 1776 to 1783, a war won through the brilliant and courageous leadership of George Washington, revered father of our nation. And whereas George Washington, who lived from 1732 to 1799, mobilized the Continental Army and led the American colonies against the most powerful country in the world, finally defeating the British at the famous Battle of Yorktown, Virginia. And whereas this revered founder of our nation resisted the efforts of many supporters to make him a king or dictator, instead using his influence and power to support the creation and adoption of the Constitution of the United States. And whereas George Washington was elected as the first president of the United States, serving two terms of office from 1789 to 1797, and through his devotion, wisdom, and vision, became the exemplar of distinguished leadership for all future presidents. And whereas, the William Hightower chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution wishes to encourage all citizens to recognize the epochal contributions of George Washington to our nation by celebrating his birthday on Saturday, February 22nd, 2020. Now, therefore, I, Travis Mitchell, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Kyle, do hereby proclaim February 22nd, 2020 as President George Washington Day, and call upon our citizens to recognize and honor the brilliance, courage, and vision of the father of our nation and the relevance of his life to the preservation of our democracy in today's complex world." Would you like to offer any remarks on this proclamation?
Sure.
As a 34-year resident of Kyle, it's always an honor to stand before the council and the citizens, representing the greatest man in this nation. My name is Stu Hoyt. I am a 21-year Air Force Vietnam Combat Veteran. My ancestors arrived in this country in 1630 and have participated in every conflict since then, especially the one that allows us the freedom to have a council that we have today. The sons and the daughters of the American Revolution are direct, bloodline descendants of those that supported the cause for freedom. George Washington dedicated the last 25 years of his life to make this the greatest nation in the world. And yet, we had a catastrophe. On one January 1981, 1970, I'm sorry, the Congress implemented the Mondays Holiday Act, combining long weekends, which everybody enjoyed, but it eliminated totally ever, ever celebrating George Washington's birthday. The average student and parent have no knowledge of George Washington's birthday, who I believe did more to establish our country than any other person. It is a sacrilege, and we're trying to turn that around. 50 states, 46 do not celebrate George Washington's birthday. Texas does not celebrate George Washington's birthday. Let's change that.
Thank you, Stu. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to say anything? Would you like to have a photograph with the council?
If you would like, I would love.
Let's do it. All right. Next up, Agenda Item Number Five, Task Force Update on Police Headquarters Construction. Chief Barnett. Okay, we'll come back to that one. Chief? You've been called. I'm not going to tell you why I called you. You can just start, you just have to start talking. Hope you guessed right.
Look up there. So, Mayor and Council, my name is Jeff Barnett, chief of police for the record. So, our committee did meet, as promised, after our last council meeting. We had several important items to discuss. Number one was to perhaps decide in the management process of our new police facility. There are several options that are out there. The committee has recommended the construction manager-at-risk method. I think you'll see an item later on your agenda for that discussion purposes, and their recommendation was to move forward in that respect. Secondly, we discussed a potential site visit to one of the locations that has a very similar building, and we're trying to secure that, that particular date, and maybe have a site visit to give the committee some more scope of the facilities. And then, we also talked about efficiencies. One of the things that was really important to the committee is that we look for all efficiencies in construction materials and design. And then, lastly, we, as we incorporate those, we want to make sure that we are within the standards for police agencies, for security, for all of the recognition programs that exist for which our agency may want to secure in the future. And that's a brief update. I think we have some things coming in the near future, but our committee did meet, and things are moving, moving well, perfectly.
Okay, thank you. Chief, any questions for chief?
Chief, the importance of this, and I guess we can start talking as we start moving forward with different pieces of this. Can you, just in a brief, what is the importance of accreditation? And how, not only for policy, but for funding, for other opportunities when you talk about accreditation? The reason why it's important for us to get to that point?
Absolutely. So, accreditation and recognition are two of the program terms that are used out there, both in the state and across the country. Your police agency that becomes recognized within the state or accredited nationally can apply for federal funding that can help them with other programs. You can look at emergency operations center equipment. You can look at emergency response equipment. And they want, they, the funding sources, want to make sure that you are performing your work and your services to the community within the accepted standards across the nation. So, as we move forward towards recognition in the future, this building is going to signify one component of that process, that there is a commitment to excellence, that there is a commitment to performing to standard or above standard. And as you mentioned, this, along with policies and practices, assures your community that what your police officers do and what they're held accountable to do is either within or exceed standards across the nation, and you're doing what is expected of you across the country.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
We also have a representative from PGAO up here today?
We'll bring him on the CMAR as well. I mean, go ahead.
No, it's, we'll wait.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Any other questions? All right. Next up, Agenda Item Number Six, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation. Mr. Barbara.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Leon Barba, City Engineer. Start with Lehman Road. These numbers are still from the same as we had last time. We haven't gotten the current pay estimate from the contractor, so we're still showing it 48% complete, although we know there's more than that that's been done. It is paved from prim roads to FM 150, and it's open to local traffic only. We're going to be meeting with the contractor and the asphalt supplier on this project this Thursday. There is a problem with the paving material that was used, and it may require replacement of some of that material that will not be at the city's cost. I do want to make a big point of that.
Leon, what was the problem with the?
They didn't meet the specifications. In this particular case, there's a certain amount of air voids that you can have in your asphalt, and it exceeds that amount. So, significant number of the tests that were taken did not meet that requirement. So, it looks like it's going to be a replacement.
Okay. You just mean too much air in the asphalt?
That's correct, yes. Let you know, the bridge at Plum Creek is going well. The drill shafts are being placed. They're about 20% complete. They expect to complete that sometime in April. We're still trying to get this whole project completed by August of 2020.
So, you don't, I'm sorry, you don't think the air void issue will cause us any delays? Or could it cause delays on that schedule?
We're going to meet on how it's going to be done, how they're going to handle traffic control, and how that's going to be taken out. So, we figure they're going to use a milling machine to take it out. It may be the top lift and this bottom lift. There's two lifts, both three inches thick. It may require removal of the whole thing. We'll figure that out Thursday with the supplier and with the contractor. So, it may be the whole thing coming out, but then we'll have to have a track control plan as we go in and take that material out. So, of course, it'll be replaced with the, obviously, the material that meets specifications.
Okay.
Mayor.
Councilmember Shields.
Just to confirm, we're still set, though, for August?
That's our plan.
Of a completion date.
That's our plan to complete, yes.
Okay.
Leon, so this is just an isolated event? This is not something, as far as materials are concerned? We're, we've tested the other areas as well coming into this, so that the, you know, the air voids that we're talking about is not something that's going to complicate the construction of the road outside of this particular area?
This section we're talking about is from 150 to Masonwood. That's the section that's involved now in this, in this particular area. The rest of the sections passed their tests, so they're fine. You know, it's disappointing, as if somebody remember, we had potholes in it right after it was paved, and that's not normal.
Right.
So, they were repaired temporarily, but as we ran more and more tests on it, we actually ran some really sophisticated tests, or we had some sophisticated tests paid that we did not pay for, just to see, was it going to rut? One of the things you don't want to happen with paving is you don't want it to rut. So, apparently, it, like I said, we ran as many tests, different tests, as we could to make sure we knew what we were getting. And if it didn't meet specs, then it has to come out, and that's what happened. It doesn't appear to meet specifications. So, this meeting that we're going to have Thursday is going to be a big, we'll find out more details of what's going to happen out more details of what's going to happen and how much of it's going to come out. And at the next council meeting, I'll be able to give you a better idea of what's coming in, what's going to happen to the road as it exists today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Burleson Street, again, the number has stayed the same. The section from Senator Rodriguez is open to local traffic only, but there's some workers in the area. North of Rodriguez to south of the roundabout, that's still closed. They're still working on that section. Burleson, north of the roundabout, if you've noticed, it's open to local traffic only. It is closed at the southbound frontage road. Utility crews working in that area installing wastewater lines. Good news, Union Pacific has finished with their work in that area. They have the planking in and the gates are in, so they pretty well completed all their work there. So the next task is for us to complete the road and tie it into that new crossing. And again, estimated completion is June of 2020. Button Creek Interceptor, we're just about finished with this project. We still have to do our final walkthrough and then we'll complete the punch list. We hope to finish this up completely by the end of March. Wastewater treatment plant expansion, as you remember, it was approved at the April, I'm sorry, at the February 4th council meeting. And right now, we're working on contract documents, getting all the paperwork in and hopefully we're starting late March with the construction on that particular project. Again, the Plum Creek Wastewater Interceptor Phase One project, the one goes to Spring Branch, that's substantially completed. We did do a final walkthrough. We're working some punch list items so we can wrap that one up. We do have consent agenda item number 13, LGA Engineering will be preparing some plans and specifications for us to recoat and rehab our existing elevated storage tank that's located on the, at Colours Crossing. It's, we also call it well site four, but it's also there on Colours Crossing, the same thing. It's the elevated tank. And then on consent agenda item number 14, Schlemmer and Porter Street is going to be one of these projects that's phased in. The intent is to replace that whole system of wastewater lines, starting at Front Street, near the railroad tracks, by the railroad tracks, all the way up through to Porter Street, past Porter Street. And this is the first of several phases. And what I've asked the consultant to do is provide Sioux Services. Sioux Services are subsurface utility engineering. Based on my experience with a recent project, we want to make sure there are no other hidden utilities in there so that when we get, go after these easements that we need from the railroad, I don't have to come back and try to get another easement. So that's what that amendment is for, to make sure we get all the utilities cleared, that there's nothing in that utility easement that we're going to need. And then also, there's another easement that we need to get meets and bounds on further north of that project that's private property. So this is what this amendment pays for. I do want to make a point, I said it was, remember it said it's a phased project. One of the things that we did with the Burleson Street project, when we knew that we had this project pretty well designed, we did add a casing underneath Burleson Street. So I didn't want to obviously go back in there and cut Burleson just to put the rest of the line in. So if anybody asks, we do have a casing underneath Burleson Street. So as this line, this project is phased through there, it will go through that casing. That's it, what I had.
Okay, thank you, Leon.
Okay.
Any questions for Mr. Barbara?
Just real quick on the retention bond in front of St. Anthony's, did we get that completed?
It's substantially completed. It still needs some grass going in there from last I looked at, but it's pretty well completed.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Leon.
Leon, any updates on the Western Cove area?
I asked him to look at some hydro mulch in that area and cleaned up a little bit better. It was a little bit rough, so I asked him to kind of clean it up and let's look at what a hydro mulch would cost, just for that area.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
All right.
All right, next up, consent agenda items number seven through 14.
Mayor?
Councilor Sheehan.
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items seven through 14.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilor Sheehan, seconded by Councilmember Vialobos. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 15. Sixteen and seventeen are all going to be brought up simultaneously. We'll still probably vote on them separate if it's council's desire after the presentation, but because Ms. Roker is going to speak on all three of the items, unless there's any objection, I'm going to bring them all up simultaneously. And I want to say thank you, Kathy. I know you've been very sick the last few days to make it here, so it just shows the dedication you have to this, so thank you for that. So agenda item number 15, approve a resolution to adopt the City of Kyle Drainage Master Plan, completed by Half Associates. Agenda item number 16, possible action to adopt an easement maintenance policy. And agenda item number 17, discussion of ordinance updates related to the drainage master plan. Ms. Roker.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members, I appreciate the time. I prepared a presentation. I'll tap dance a little if I could, but. It's a pretty brief presentation. I left time for questions and stuff at the end, so.
Give me a second.
Okay. Okay, going to start with the drainage master plan. The first slide is just a brief background of the Storm Drainage and Blood Risk Mitigation Utility. It was created in November of 2016. In January of 2017, we started collecting the fees for residential and commercial. In February 2017, we began staffing and buying equipment. And in November 2018, Half Associates completed the city's first ever drainage master plan, which prioritized the scope and in order of some of our larger drainage projects for the city. The Drainage Master Plan identified 29 drainage CIP projects. The city, we ended up breaking them into three groups. The first group, which included approximately nine projects, were potential in-house projects that our city drainage crew could complete and those are listed here. The second set is potential shared projects. Those are projects that we feel our drainage crew can assist in some of those areas to help those projects, to share some of the cost. And the third series of projects is either wholly or partially outsourced for contractors or others to complete. So, and all of those 29 projects totaled roughly $19 million. I wanted to throw this slide in there. Again, I kept that really brief. I didn't know how in-depth y'all wanted me to go on the drainage master plan, so if you have any questions.
Well, we've been waiting for a little while to bring this forward, but when we created the $5 stormwater fee, that's what funded the ability for us to put together the first stormwater maintenance plan that the city's ever had. So up until this point, essentially, we've been putting our stormwater into place based on stormwater laws, but not with, maybe with the best understanding of how the stormwater will impact the entire infrastructure. Is that fair to say?
That is correct. And also too, in the past, the drainage issues throughout the city were really only given focus when budget allowed. As y'all are aware, there's a lot of other very important infrastructure, be it wastewater, water throughout the city, that would typically take the lion's share of the city's budget. And so with this drainage utility, it allowed us to set aside money for specific, specific to only drainage, which was great.
Can you talk a little bit about the importance of the plan, the document in particular?
Yeah, before the drainage master plan, the city, we knew of our issues. We knew all the different areas throughout town, but we didn't know to the extent of the entire scope of what the projects would really entail or even estimates of what those projects would cost. And so it helped us look at all those projects and then also to prioritize them, looking at it from a risk standpoint. And then it also gave us things where we could make changes in our city ordinances and things along those lines to actually help the city grow and protect a lot of our drainage infrastructure and plan better.
Okay.
The easement maintenance policy, y'all should have a copy of it in its draft form. Again, it is draft. This slide just shows the highlights and pretty much it is that individual property owners will be responsible for mowing and maintenance of all drainage infrastructure located on their property. And HOAs will be responsible for mowing and maintenance of all of the drainage easements within the HOA, as outlined in the subdivision plat notes. Enforcement, we would get code enforcement to give the responsible party a window and we wrote 21-day that that could be changed to mow and maintain their drainage infrastructure once an issue is brought to their attention. The penalty, I went and I spoke to Judge Cable and I thought it was probably easiest to just say that a cost not to exceed $2,000, because you might, in this, using this mowing and maintenance policy, it does not guarantee that they're going to actually mow the problem. And so the fee at that time could escalate if needed. So if you have somebody that you go out and you say, here, here's a $50 fine for not maintaining your drainage infrastructure, they might pay that $50. And then, but it doesn't necessarily get mowed. After talking to Judge Cable, he said that we could not tie the fee to the cost of service because that's something that we did explore. And we talked about having our drainage crews go out. Now, we could still potentially go out there and maintain it, but we can't tie that fee to the cost of service, if that makes sense. So we can't say we had X number of guys out there, it took them X number of time and that's what the fee is going to be. We can't do that. So it would be decided by the judge if there was a fee.
Okay.
I have a question. And that is, I know the 21 calendar day deadline to mow, however, sometimes in the drainage easements, water sits and you cannot get down in there. Is there an allowance for variance for that type of situation?
Yes, there is. We definitely did write in a variance in situations that code enforcement could grant and that would be made available.
Councilor Ariza.
I'm just thinking about, I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but kind of ties into this. On 50, it's 50-412, Section C, it talks about what the property owner is responsible for. So they're just going to be responsible for mowing and trimming trees, the silt, who's responsible for that?
And my apologies, whenever we were drafting these, this, it's a set of ordinances that have been compiled for a period of time now. And I actually did go in there and write a note to myself that that would need to be edited. That was something that Paige and I had discussed almost a year ago, I think it was March of 2019. And so that's where that wording is from. So that actually, that wording would need to be amended.
Okay, so they're not going to be responsible for the silt in there or who's responsible for that in the ditch, drainage ditch?
It will depend on if it's city or it depends on who owns it.
And one reason I'm bringing that forward is just because, you know, anything that builds up on the bottom of that usually happens from upstream. So I just want to make sure that we're not adding a charge to somebody for something they can't really control because that's coming from upstream, you know what I mean? So that's kind of what I'm looking at, making sure that we're not overreaching in a way, you know, to try to get them to clean up. I can understand with mowing that, and when we started this, I was under the assumption that we were going to really, you know, make sure that they mow, they trim trees, if there's a little trash, pick it up. But as far as silt, I don't think that a homeowner would have accessibility to get rid of that, you know, because that takes machinery. So it's kind of what I'm thinking.
You are correct. The mowing and maintenance policy is primarily for certain areas that, there aren't very many areas within the city that I think that this policy would apply to when it comes to the individual property owners. Most of the city falls under the HOA category, but there are certain sections in the city, some of the older sections that are under the individual property owner. And I think the city has kind of gotten a handle on that now, whenever we review plans that we're making sure that drainage infrastructure within the subdivision is maintained by the HOAs.
Just, when we're talking about those other properties and HOAs and so on and so forth, when we're talking about maintenance, how are we defining maintenance?
Maintenance is, I don't know, I did not print a copy. You should have the copy in your packets and it actually is defined. That's one of the very first parts of the policy. My apologies, I should have brought that with me. But it does define mowing and it defines maintenance.
Councilor Tibius.
Yes, to kind of reiterate what Councilor Ariza was saying, when it comes to the runoff in the drainage, you know, a lot of that would come from commercial properties. And just trying to understand why the HOAs would be responsible for some of that maintenance on that, if it has to do with any kind of runoff that has nothing to do with inside their neighborhood.
Most of the areas throughout town, the city does have some larger subdivisions that have larger amounts of drainage going through them. You would have to almost look at it on a case-by-case basis because it's not always the case where you have large amounts of drainage coming from off-site impacting a particular subdivision. I could name a couple off the top of my head. Water Leaf, Hometown Kyle, they're taking on, you know, excessive drainage. So it's kind of a case-by-case basis and it's really just where they lie within the city, what is developed above them. And it's one of those things, coming to work for the City of Kyle, it's my first time to come and work for a city. I had worked for the state prior. And sadly, I hate to say, that's the way it's done primarily in subdivisions in cities. The drainage infrastructure is owned and operated by the HOAs, but it does become a heavy burden on those HOAs. And I hate to give that as my, I don't know how and why that started. If I had to guess, it would be because the cost of a city maintaining all of that infrastructure could overwhelm the city.
Okay, yeah, that just concerns me from, coming from an HOA point, that it would cost money out of their pocket on that end when they're really focusing on the upkeep of the neighborhood itself and the amenities, that it would be a big concern and a big expense on their part, having to take care of that whenever it's, again, has nothing to do with inside the perimeters of the neighborhood. It would be other factors like commercial growth or commercial development that'd be coming down there and causing problems with the drainage and so forth. And so that'd be a big concern that I've been hearing on my end from the HOAs, that it would, it would cost them a lot on their end.
And it is a legitimate concern. It definitely is. That's something that, you know, when we were establishing the drainage utility, in a perfect world, if money was not an issue, for the city to take over all existing drainage infrastructure would be fabulous. Because what most cities find, not just Kyle, is that the HOA and even commercial drainage infrastructure isn't always maintained properly. So in a perfect world, if money was not an issue, it's a fantastic idea. And that's where Kyle was coming from, that's where we were coming from when we were initially looking at this. And then after we got the drainage master plan and we realized the money of just the CIP projects, let alone taking on existing drainage infrastructure in a workshop that we had about a year ago, and I don't have that exact number, but we're getting more and more water quality ponds on the west side because they're over the Edwards Aquifer and they're required by the state to actually have a water quality component of that, of those detention ponds. And when you go in to maintain those ponds, the silt, it's just silt and sediment that you remove, it actually becomes a special waste. And the disposal rate of it, of that waste alone is roughly, I think, like three times what it would normally cost to dispose of, of just a normal waste. And so it's just something that unfortunately you guys get to decide of taking on those costs.
When we look at oversight of this, though, I think the component that we're not talking about, or maybe we have a little bit, is code enforcement. That's along with commercial, all the way down to residential code enforcement. But when you look at the actual maintenance and you talk about a case-by-case basis, it's just a matter of, and I got to read that really quick with regards to the maintenance piece, is it really outlines directly what you're responsible for, for maintenance. My conversations over and over again since I've been on the council have been, how is maintenance defined? Because I've spoken to many different HOA members and leaders and they all have a different definition of what maintenance means to them, right? And maintenance is maintain everything. And it's, you know, unfortunately, some of that comes with maintaining that area and pulling some of that silt out. That's why you're taking in fees and those types of things. People have a disagreement with that, but I know if you're maintaining it, it's not cut the grass and leave the clippings there. It's not leave the debris there after you trim it down. It needs to be removed and taken out. And if it's there for a long period of time, some neighborhoods are doing a very good job at trimming and keeping debris out and slowing down that process of drainage, right? So then therefore, it's not capturing as much silt. But at some point, I would assume that if you're in charge of your HOA and you're in charge of your neighborhood, that there's going to be a time where there's going to be an expense for removal of silt, right? Just because of the drainage and ponds and things that come into that, right? Did you have something to say, Harper, about that? Yeah. I just, I'm talking about, you know, this is all interrelated. Obviously, for us as a city, it's oversight and enforcement of our own codes. We have to do a better job at that and we're owning that. That's why we're doing this today. But I just think the definition and understanding of what it means for maintenance of your, of those properties is really the breadth of that. This really defines it and coming in, it's like, okay, maintenance is just not trimming and making everything look beautiful. It's a lot more than that.
Harper Wilder, Public Works Director. Yes, sir, you're exactly right.
Yes, sir, you're exactly right. In the past, to maintain what it said in there, that developer, when they came in, and they said, we want to put in the subdivision here, those drainage ways they were supposed to maintain, which was, you know, working the slopes, removing the soil, doing all the things to keep that in the condition it needs to properly convey the stormwater downstream. What I've seen happen, your HOAs there, presidents change out, board members on the HOA change out. And then the new staff that comes in, well, why are we, why are we responsible for this? But it was like that from the beginning. They knew that they had every aspect of maintaining it. So you are on the right track there with what you're saying. The full maintenance means every aspect of maintaining that drainage way.
Do we ever get to a zero? Do we ever get to a balance where we say, okay, here's a new canvas, this is where we're going to start from, but this is what it looks like when it's completely maintained. This is what it looks like when it's at the appropriate depth. This is what it looks like when you have a clear channel without debris. And then we say, this is what we're going to enforce from here on out. Do we get to that point at any point?
Well, so Leon and I are on all the final walkthroughs for every subdivision in the city that comes in. They are like that in the beginning. They have to be, they have to be graded to a certain majority of three to one slopes on the sides. Everything's downstream, everything looks pretty. And when we do that final walkthrough, everything is pretty. What, and I'm just talking in history, it appears to me like the money set aside by HOAs to say, okay, we need something here in the background, you know, to make sure that when we have to come in and maintain these, maybe we need some equipment or whatnot to get in here and do it, or hire a company to come in and do it. That hasn't been the case. And so then they'll say, well, we'll mow it. So that's totally up to y'all, and I said that in the past. We can come in and do these things. As Kathy said, it would be great, because when we do them, you know, we have the equipment and the ability. But the manpower and the cost it would take to do the entire city would, you know, would be enormous. So that's why it's still that the HOA has to maintain. But yes, every time that we do a final walkthrough for a new subdivision, it looks like what you're talking about.
So if I was to take away some action items here, just so I can understand this and explain this to people, is number one, is it oversight? Enforcement is something that we're incorporating back into, you know, a standard oversight enforcement of the code on what required, both commercial and residential, right?
Yes, and I think that we, Kathy said it very accurately earlier. In the past, we never had this. We didn't have anything. We were more response driven. If something happened, we would go over there, we would try to assist them if we could. But we never had anything like this where there's a set process and then, and then even an enforcement and a penalty. So to have somebody go back in there to kind of keep them on the right track, hey, guys, we need to do this. If you need any help, come holler at us, we'll be happy to share with you. I think it's a very good thing, because like she said, the only other alternative is to go the other way. And then that, that cost is all coming to the city.
All right, so how do we, have we discussed how we get back to zero? Okay, so we didn't have this in place, so now we have people that had different ideas on what maintenance means. And now we're coming with the policy now, and this is what we're going to do from here on out. How do we get back to zero? And if this is something that wasn't, that we weren't enforcing, wasn't part of policy at the time, now we, now we need to have some, some of these areas cleared out, you know, how do we, how do we get to this point?
In the stormwater program that I'm in charge of for the city, part of this, the program is to ensure that detention ponds are maintained properly. I do have verbiage already written in the ordinance where I have the authority to go in. I have not been doing it because of the Drainage Master Plan and not knowing exactly what direction we were going in. So I didn't want to go out and start talking to HOAs, just because the issue has been kind of undetermined. But I do have that authority as well as enforcement, code enforcement for, if it's more just tall grass and stuff like that, then code enforcement could follow up on that. But within the stormwater program, there is inspections to be done that I can follow up. Now, I'm not an engineer, so I'm not going to be, it's going to be one of those simple things where you can pretty much tell if a tree is in the detention pond, and trees shouldn't be in detention ponds. I wouldn't be able to go in and say, it looks like you have too much silt. But when you see erosion, erosion is never good. Erosion leads to bigger erosion. You know, it's things along those lines. And also too, as a, as a program, I've been talking to Leon about implementing maybe something similar to what Sam Marcus has, but not making, making it an annual review where you actually have an engineering firm that the city has actually vetted those engineers and we can guarantee that they specialize in drainage, but require an engineer that specializes in drainage to go in every three to five years and, and do a full analysis of detention ponds. So that, that's something that we are looking into as well.
So maybe less enforcement and a lot more education in some points on a case by case basis?
I would definitely like to start with education. That would be, that would be where I would, where I would start for sure.
So I guess my concern now at this point is that we have areas and HOAs that had a different understanding based on just overt policy that's been in the books that they can see and revert back to. How do we, how, how do we as a city help them get back to zero and then we start from there? That's, I guess that's my next question. I think that's probably what they're hitting on, what people are getting questions about. Before you go, Councilor Tibias, do you have anything you wanted to finish up on?
Just, just that, making sure that we're all on the same page with the HOAs again. Because the big concern that I have again is, is the money that they receive in from their homeowners is to making sure that all their amenities are kept up. And of course, just making sure that they have their area nice and everything like that, and of course, whatever they have. But I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page in what Councilman Villalobos says. If we start from zero, start with education, start moving forward in that sense to where we are all on the same page, defining what maintenance is and make it across the board, across the city if we have to. And if it's a matter of picking up dirt, brush, whatever it is, it's all in the same line. Thank you.
Councilmember Ellison. Councilor Shiel.
First of all, as part of the HOA reserve study that they have done about every five or 10 years, maintaining the drainage easements should be a part of that. So if they are fiscally responsible, they should have in their reserve study the time and a budget amount that they have to put forward to making sure that their drainage easements are engineered properly and, you know, everything's still good. The, my main concern, so the HOA should have been doing everything as they, they were maintained, as that's their land. And so I, I mean, I don't know about having the city actually help them get to zero. They should have been doing that as part of their reserve study in the first place. Now, when it comes to individuals like in the Steeplechase and the Masonwood area, how, I guess my issue with them is if one person's eroding and they're not maintaining it and everything, and they can't get down in there to, you know, do it, that's going to affect their neighbor, which then affects their next neighbor and just snowballs from there. I'm not sure how to make sure that those are engineered, you know, throughout the drainage with it being owned by individual people. So, I mean, that may be a little bit different from getting to zero, just because they, as I said, you know, neighbor one needs to get it done so that it doesn't snowball down. So I don't, I would think that we can help out those to get them down to zero, and then it is their responsibility to maintain from there. But the HOAs should have already funded and should have been from the get-go. From the time it was a builder run HOA all the way to the transition and forward, when it was the actual homeowners who ran, you know, were on the board and had ownership of that HOA, then they should have had that in the reserve study and should have been maintaining it as per their land. So that's my thinking there.
Councilor Ellison.
I just had some thoughts and then a clarifying point. So I do agree that it should have been maintained, and that's part of responsibility of ownership of land and property and different things like that. And I know in the past, we have gotten many properties back to zero, if you will. But I think the education piece is important, because a lot of property owners aren't aware that that easement is their property. And that is a part of, just like the amenities in a neighborhood, just like the shared spaces in a neighborhood and everything else that your HOA fees go to, that is also a part of the property within the subdivision. I just want to make sure we're all aware of that and that clarifying point. I think that this highlights a need for us to have better communication and open lines of communication with our HOA boards around the city. I think that's something that we need to maintain, that conversation and communication, especially as things like this happen or being spoken about. We can relay when these things are being discussed that will impact that homeowner associations and therefore the residents within those subdivisions. So I'd like to see us bolster, bolster that up and really get a better communication list. And I know all subdivisions don't have HOAs, but everyone that does, we should have a strong point of contact for each one of those. So I guess I would be, you know, and I know we've done it in the past, and if, you know, it's kind of been that same thing, we'll get it back down to zero and then it gets back to where it was, because there really wasn't the understanding that that maintenance, and I agree with Councilman Villalobos, defining these things prior, as you mentioned, Ms. Reg, we didn't have this document and this plan and this study done. So I would be in favor of an education piece, helping our residents get back to a place where they can maintain, because some of those areas are just, have gotten so out of hand. If you don't have the right equipment and commercial sized equipment, you're not going to be able to do a whole lot. Next, I wanted to just bring up a clarifying point, and I appreciate your document, Kathy. One of the things you talked about was identifying responsible properties in your document. And there's the identifying responsible parties, mowing and maintenance responsibilities of public easements. And you've identified, and this is the first time I've seen this number, and I'm not going to hold that against anybody. That could just be my ignorance there. But all drainage improvements where you set stormwater runoff from an area greater than 300 acres shall be considered serving a public purpose and shall be dedicated to the city as right of way and or drainage easement. And that's currently, we've identified those areas throughout our city, and that's currently where perhaps Harper's team is taking care of those right of way or drainage easements that are a responsibility of the city. Would it be, and I'm looking over at Pavez as well, talking about this, the $5 fee, because that's, I know something we hear a lot about, I hear a lot about. Would that $5 fee be by and large what is covering the cost of those right of way and drainage easements that are maintained by the city? Could you give us a general scope of what that covers and why? Because we've had past meetings as well, and I understand citizens can't get to all these meetings or see them. But we've talked about this and we've looked at ways of how we can improve drainage easements and different things like that and why that, because a lot of folks have come to us and why that $5 isn't covering what, you know, all these areas. So if you could speak to that a little bit, Pavez.
Just in general, Mayor and Council, I'm Pavez Moyes, City's Director of Finance. We bring in about $1.5 million in fees each year. So that money is available for operations and maintenance at the Public Works Department and administrative staff such as Kathy. After paying our administrative costs or O and M costs, we have approximately $350,000. That's available to go towards drainage projects each year. And that's what we have been, council has been setting aside in the budget each year, about $350,000 to $400,000 a year. So that's the full scope of the revenue stream for the Storm Drainage Utility.
Thank you, I appreciate that clarifying point, because I think that's something that sometimes gets a little confusion on.
Councilor Ellison, can I just ask a clarifying question? The 1.1 and change you're talking about is not just administrative costs. There's a whole lot associated with that in terms of maintenance of the entire city's stormwater infrastructure.
Majority of that cost is for Drainage Utility technicians out there, mowing and trimming and grading.
Councilor Ariza.
I think we got a little further reaching than we thought. When I was talking about what the HOAs were responsible for, I know they're responsible for mowing, they're responsible for tree trimming. What I'm talking about is the silt on the bottom, and that usually comes from runoff upstream. And that's what I started this conversation with, and that's my biggest concern, because we started talking about silt. And Harper brought up a good point is that that silt, you just can't throw it anywhere. You have to take it to a specialized location. So that means you have to hire someone that knows how to deal with that and take that up. And I think we're adding that burden to the HOAs. And that's where I'm concerned, because it's not just what's coming out of the subdivision, it's what's coming throughout that whole stream that runs through that subdivision. And, you know, because I truly believe that mowing, tree cutting belongs to the HOA or the property owners. But the silt is something, sometimes you don't have any control over, because it could be coming from upstream. So that's, that's where I worry about, what are we going to do? What can we do to kind of help them with that?
Ideally, in a perfect world, we would be controlling the silt at its source. But then again, too, when you start getting erosion and things along those lines, it just gets deeper and deeper and so more and more silt goes downstream. Ideally, it'd be best to stop it at the source. And through the stormwater program, we do try to do that at construction sites, using the silt fencing and things along those lines. But inevitably, silt does go downstream from various projects. So it's a, it's a great question, and it's something that I can, you know, kind of look into, see what other cities are doing to try to address that. I guess it becomes a fine line, and then if, if city crews go in and start regrading, because it wouldn't just be going in and removing silt, it would turn into a lot more at that point. But it's a great question. I can look into it further.
I'm going to, I'm going to jump in on that, if that's okay, for a second. So, so some, some challenges with this ordinance, which is the reason it's continued to circle and circle without landing the plane, because it's challenging with a lot of issues. You know, one question, you know, with regards to the, you know, to the silt that I have is, so I'm a commercial property owner in the city of Kyle, and I was required per our policies for the first, you know, whereas my neighbor wasn't, this was an example I used in the past. Development that happened pre a certain date didn't have to do stormwater retention. So my neighbor does no stormwater retention, straight flat, they use the entire property as they see fit. I had to use a good chunk of my property to develop stormwater infrastructure. An entire, you know, stormwater berm with a concrete weir and a concrete flume that channels all the water that collects on my property to a specific point. And that retention pond is designed such that whenever there's a large rain, especially like some of our very large rains, the entire chunk of my property now fills up with water and then releases it slowly. And what happens is after a certain number of those rains, eventually silt begins to form there. So the question then would be, are you, are you saying that the city should come in and scoop up the silt? Or is that my responsibility? Or is it my neighbor's responsibility who didn't have to put any stormwater infrastructure when, when they went in? Or is it the property owner further upfield who applied that silt? So it's really kind of a, the reason I'm asking the question is because it really has a lot to do with standards and what stormwater infrastructure does is retains water, which is what creates silt. The water settles at the bottom and that's where that silt comes. So it's in many ways, I think, a function of the stormwater infrastructure of the, the property owner or responsible party that creates the silt, regardless of where the silt necessarily originated. And I was actually going to, it's just striking to me how similar this is to our sidewalk conversation. I mean, it's like a carbon copy. We have sidewalks all throughout our city, and those sidewalks are technically the responsibility of the property owners. And yet, what we've really adopted is a hybrid policy where we make, we keep it at where it should be, which is the responsibility of the property owners, but we allocate. is the responsibility of the property owners, but we allocate certain amounts to go and identify critical issues and kind of insert ourselves into that equation. But it's based on the resources that we allocate. And even though we allocate those resources, we're not abdicating liability or responsibility outside of that. But we've just come up with some ways to save money and use some of our efficiencies of scale, our economies of scale, to maintain some of that infrastructure. So from a policy standpoint, you know, we've been kicking this around now for, as you said, two to three years, and we all recognize it's a challenge, because we don't want to put any burdens on any one person. But I think, you know, it's either the property owner pays for it, the HOA pays for it, the city pays for it. That is all the same thing, by the way. That's kind of, that's my challenge, is that no matter what, the people of the city pay to maintain. And what we're saying as a council with the adoption of this stormwater maintenance policy and our just general development regulations, not only, I mean, we just changed our regulations last year to increase the floodplain to 100, or from the 100-year to basically the 500-year floodplain, or two feet above the 100-foot.
The two feet.
Two feet above the 100-foot floodplain. What that means is bigger stormwater facilities, more stormwater facilities. We're saying if you're going to develop in Kyle, if you're going to build, you must maintain your stormwater. And where I think a lot of the challenge has been is in these old, so as the evolution of our regulatory processes goes from no regulation to where we're trying to get to, which is a more sophisticated, professional stormwater maintenance policy, there are people getting caught up who aren't coming in now, but who were here before we adopted these policies. And the question is, how do you deal with those folks? And I want to say, I think the hybrid model is probably the best, which is essentially to allocate certain amounts of our resources out of the stormwater maintenance policy to address some of those critical issues. But even then, we must be careful, because there are parity challenges. No matter what you do, the moment you spend $500,000 to go down and fix the Quell Ridge issues, or in Steeplechase, or behind, you know, the Masonwood subdivision, we've taken money from all over the city, and what we've said is, your problems, we're going to fix at the cost of everyone else, which is a governmental question. It's a governmental challenge, not one that's very easy. But what I believe is true, and is good government, is to establish a policy that is clear and consistent across the city, which is what this attempts to do. I did have one question on the double inspection annual for commercial and multifamily. That seems, seems a bit excessive.
Again, that verbiage was actually copied and pasted from a year ago. So yeah, that, I had actually made note on that as well. I saw that at least, at least twice per year.
Yeah, and the backup material has, looks like it still has some notes. Are you asking us to vote on the draft ordinance updates?
No.
Right now?
No, no, no. This is just discussion to get y'all's input on what you think of some of these.
Okay, so, but you do want to, the 15 and 16 are the two that you're asking for votes on, but not 17?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Well, that would be my feedback on that particular item. I'm not sure that, you know, commercial in particular, a twice-annual inspection seems, seems pretty intense.
It does.
Something that I doubt anyone's going to be very keen on.
Well, really, I think, no, when it came to that inspection, it's a visual. It's going out and looking for erosion and looking for litter. Because there's, I guess there's different types of inspections as well. There could be a three-to-five-year inspection where you're actually looking at the structural integrity. But in reality, you really want even HOAs going out at least once per year and just visually inspecting, even if they're not doing anything, but going out there and looking at the detention pond, saying, is there erosion? Is there trash that we need to pick up?
So you're very loosely interpreting those qualified to inspect stormwater facilities?
In, in, yes.
If you're saying that I can go inspect my own stormwater facility and make sure everything looks correct, because it says, you know, you must cause to be inspected twice per year someone who is qualified to do stormwater inspections. I don't know that I would be qualified in the way that that seems to imply.
You brought up a great point, and I'll make sure that there is a definition. But I, I do think it is a good idea to even let HOA know, HOAs know that they should be going out at least once a year and just visually inspecting for debris and erosion.
It's a challenge, because some of it has to do with the complexity of the system itself. Like, if you've got somebody with a berm and a weir, there's not that much to inspect. You want to make sure that it's not blowing out somewhere, and that means that it's fine. But some of these larger stormwater facilities are significantly more complex and more dangerous, should there be a failure or a breach. So, you know, in which case, twice a year, I know that's not the residential section, but twice a year may not necessarily be enough. You know, how often do we need folks to inspect the Plum Creek Dam? There was concern in the Memorial Day flood that it could rupture, and what kind of, what kind of problems would that have had? So it's, anyway. Councilor Sheehan.
I guess this question is for Harper, since he mentioned, when the property is walked through to look at the engineering of the detention easements and ponds. When, I guess, first of all, you're verifying that it is done to the engineering specs of the original plat and how it was designed, correct?
I guess the best thing to say is we review it. That's a sealed engineer that's doing that. Even Leon, he's not an engineer stating that this has to be like this, because it's already a sealed engineer providing that information. The contractor's supposed to do the same thing as what the engineer provided. So what we do, we look at the plans and see that, try to see that it's constructed as the plans were given.
Okay. Then I'm going to take another step back to when it's designed. Are we making sure that those easements are designed for, I'm going to say worst-case scenario, just meaning that it's completely built out? Say, you know, right now, your neighbor may not, you know, that has not developed that property, but you know maybe 20 years down the road it will, and that that drainage easement would be able to handle, and it was designed to handle, silt from that upgraded, you know, that up river or whatever.
Kathy's probably going to mimic the same thing. But when that developer comes in and looks at that particular piece of property, they've got topo's, and they look at all the rainfall that's coming to that property. And Leon's probably a much better person to explain this. But they're going to look at all the rainfall coming on that property. They're going to look at how that property flows in its current state, and then how they're going to adapt that and change that and move it to drainage easements or detentions. They're going to look at all that. So they bring all that together. They will bring all that together and provide that plan to us. We go in there, and we make sure that that's, you know, that's been followed. What I think, well, go ahead, go ahead, let her. But I think you're getting at something else, and I'll tell you here a second if she answers.
Okay. I know whenever we are reviewing plans, we actually have Kishav Nawali, who is in the engineering department, and he specializes in drainage. And I know that is, he looks at various other things, but he really focuses on drainage. And that is something that we are wanting to codify. And so in the packet, it actually has, under floods, it actually has, "Projective runoff rates for the design and analysis of storm drainage facilities shall be based on the expected ultimate development." He makes those comments now, when plan reviews come in, but just to even make it more simplistic and make sure developers know that that's what we require and that's what we want. We would like to codify ultimate development scenario, so that when they are designing their drainage infrastructure, they're looking at everything upstream that's going to be contributing through that property. And that's something that I can't say with 100% accuracy is, and I don't know when that, when that started.
That's what I was about to ask next, was, do we know when that started?
And see, that's what I thought, I thought you were looking at everything coming into that property. So they do have a rainfall flow of what's coming to that property ahead of time when they're designing it.
Right, for current, but with ultimate development, that changes.
It does.
You know, with.
Well, yes, it changes in certain ways, in certain ways it doesn't, because they'll look at that entire area. Let's say it's a new subdivision. We're going to take all the rainfall that's coming in the subdivision, and we're going to convey it to a detention pond. So what changes is, instead of, I'm just doing a hypothetical, instead of maybe sheet flowing, you know, off to this end of the property, now it's all conveyed through stormwater sewer into a detention pond, then it emits at one single point. So that change sometimes can cause issues downstream, because now you have all this area releasing to this one point.
And it's a faster flow, which then also leads to more erosion.
They'll design it to where it has to release over whatever time period. And like I said, Leon's much better at explaining all that, but yes, it can.
Okay. And just to let council kind of know a number, because we had somebody come in and take a look at our drainage easement from Gina to Sheep's Trail in between New Country and New Bridge, that section. And that was, and that's maybe, it's less than a quarter of a mile. And it was $35,000 for them to come in and just clear it, not take out, you know, re-engineer it or take out the, just to clear it a brush and a little overgrowth of trees, $35,000 to do just that. So just to give you kind of a cost of what it would be for, you know, of course, that's us outsourcing it, and our group would, of course, you know, be able to. So if we could come up with a sidewalk compares, you know, comparable plan, it's still going to cost the city a lot of money, and that would take away from our CIPs that of neighborhoods, especially in District 2, just because, if I remember correctly, six of the nine CIPs in that top ten, that top section were in District 2, to help with a lot of flooding that we have on the south side of Kyle.
If you, if you recall in the past, when Mr. Sellers brought forth the different options that were related to the, to the fees, that we could increase the fees, I mean, that we could handle some of these other areas. We could take on these by the city, but the cost was, was going to be tremendous. So that conversation.
$19 million.
Yes. So that was one of the reasons why we did what we're doing, continuing right now, and then, but still circling around, as you said, looking for that final answer, I guess.
If I can add, I think it's important to remind everyone that the half-study recommended that we focus our attention on the Plum Creek itself. They ran multiple scenarios of detention ponds in different areas, different sizes of pond. And in each scenario, there was not a detention pond large enough that could handle the amount of storm drainage that needed to get through the city of Kyle. So most of their recommendations were, make sure you shore up that Plum Creek channel as much as possible with the resources that we have, that will at least protect the majority of the flooding issues that we have.
Wasn't one of the big CIPs that we were looking at, kind of an expansion of that channel on the east side?
It is, yeah.
Around, behind Kensington, maybe?
It would be in the area by Fox's Pizza.
The original one was by the Dog Park.
Yeah, by, around the Dog Park, just north of Steeplechase Park. So it recommended some channel benchings, some maybe pump systems that we could put in there, some different channelization methods, maybe some riprap. But definitely, that's a very high critical project in the plan. Councilor Ellison?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, reading through the maintenance policy and to Councilmember Rizzo's very legitimate point of silt. So in your maintenance definition, you have about four or five lines down towards the end of that line. It says, "Sedimentation removal and retention and detention basins." Would, if this was, a policy was adopted as written, would that be understood to include what Councilmember Rizzo was talking about as far as silt? If that, am I understanding that correctly?
Correct.
So I think, to Councilmember Rizzo's point, if we wanted to do something about that or take that burden off the homeowner association or property, we probably need to look at evaluating that verbiage in the policy. Does that go along to your point, Councilmember Rizzo?
Yeah, I'm just, you know, my biggest concern was how much of it we're going to throw on the HOA. And what I think about is, you know, the fees increasing, and, you know, just for that certain area, when, you know, going back to what the mayor says, even though it's going down upstream, you know, we've got to find a place where we're going to attack, attack that silt, just that, I'd just like to distribute it a little bit more broader than putting it just on a certain area, you know. That's one of the things I'm looking at. But, yeah, I just, I really don't know what the answer to the solution for it is. It just worries me. How deep does the silt get before they have to remove? Do we have a certain amount of inches before they have to remove that?
I know what the requirements are when it gets up on silt fencing, but I don't really think that there is a requirement as far as detention ponds. I think when it starts to inhibit the original design, you know, if it gets to a point where it starts to inhibit, you know, if it's not being able to get to the weir properly or get to the outfall properly, I'm sure an engineer that specializes in drainage would have a way different opinion. My apologies for not having that exact number, but.
Yeah.
Kathy, that's exactly right. So it, you know, once it passes its engineered design as being a detention pond, then it will need to be cleaned out, reshaped. And certain ponds are built differently. Some of them actually, instead of having some sort of a weir or flume system, they will drain out the bottom through perforated piping or other manners. They get silted up much quicker. So again, it's just up to how it was built and what that engineer will certify.
What I've seen throughout Kyle, more than anything, is erosion. And erosion is probably a bigger problem than silt, just because once, once you start getting erosion, it just starts taking away all the, a lot more. And so.
Okay. And the reason I was asking is because, and the properties I helped manage up in Austin, we, there's certain parts of our retention ponds and our drainage, when it gets to a certain amount of inches, we're responsible for it, or the city comes back and finds us. But that's why I was wondering if we were going to be that, what do you call it, strict as they are. But it seems like we're not going to be that strict. We're going to wait till it really redefines what the pond is or the drainage, or it really affects water flow. I was just making sure we're going after them when it gets to a couple of inches, you know, and we're making them go in there and get equipment in there and get all that out of there.
Really, and the main goal is just to make sure that they're maintained properly, you know, so that you don't encounter problems in the event of a catastrophic, you know, a heavy flood or a heavy rainfall event. You know, it's more just to ensure that it is, it's maintaining its structural integrity, you know, you're not getting erosion on the sides, you know, keeping trashy items, keeping brush, trees out of there, that kind of thing, because that's, if you stay on top of those things, you typically don't really have issues. And the silt buildup, you know, would build up over time, but it's nothing that I see that usually happens from one rainfall event unless you have something that's blocking the flow. And so you have the water standing in the detention pond for a lot longer than it should be standing. Then, of course, it settles out.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or thoughts? Councilor Sheehan?
I just want to, in the stormwater drainage master plan, they had two, they, excuse me, they had three options for us to choose from. One was that, like, it looks like we are choosing here, where the, either the HOA or the property owner is responsible for the detention pond. Number two was, I think it was city to take over the maintenance of the HOA detention ponds with following conditions. And then, but the drainage channels were left to the HOA or the individual homeowner. And option three was that the city pretty much take on the entirety of everything. Now, one, I guess, since we are choosing option one, and I guess when we make our motion, we'll have to specify which option we are choosing, correct?
You're talking about the options from the workshop?
Yes. When we, when we vote to take on the master plan, don't we have to say which option we're choosing? Or are we doing that with the next vote when we come up with the policy?
The drainage master plan is a, is a living document. So at any time, whenever the city, if we decide to change course and take on existing drainage infrastructure, at any time, the city can do that. Adopting the drainage master plan is just like adopting the transportation master plan. So it's nothing that you have to define everything at this moment, because it is a living document, and it should remain a living document. living document and it should remain a living document.
All right. One thing I do want to just state, um, ever since this plan came out, we found out the real numbers and everything. You know, I've, I've been pretty vocal about the fact that, uh, I think especially the HOAs, when they already had a line item in their budget for mowing and a lot of them, even the maintaining of the drainage easements. And they paid a company to come take that and take care of it. Now, some of the HOAs may not have done it as well as others, but it was happening. And then we were told, because we didn't have this yet, that that $5 fee was going to go towards the city taking over everything and doing the, the, the mowing and the maintaining. So I kind of liken this to the, um, the taxpayers and the voting citizens of this area, you know, being told, oh yeah, we'll build this tollway and all of the truckers will, will go on that and leave I-35 to you. You know, so we were kind of sold a bill of goods with this. And so I want to really stress that from now on, if we ever start another, um, fee to our residents or start another plan like this or, you know, anything comparable, that we really look into what we are talking about before we initiate a fee and make sure that we are not selling our citizens a bill of goods.
I agree. And I will, and I will take partial responsibility for that, of course. I started doing the, uh, the drainage utility. I'd been with the city for three months and I didn't know all of the issues.
And I'm not putting fault to you, to you at all. Uh, you know, it took a lot, it took an entire council.
Yeah.
To vote on that. Okay. So, I mean.
I mean, ideally, in hindsight, I wish we, we could have had the drainage master plan first and known the numbers and, and worked backwards instead of working forward in that, if that makes sense. We should have, I should have known our universe before, you know, saying $3, $5. And so I can, I definitely take, take responsibility for that.
That's not what I'm, you know, I'm not trying to, you know, assess faults. I'm just saying.
I know it's made in the future.
I just, we really need to make sure that this does not happen again because that is what I hear primarily. I thought that $5 was for the city to take care of this and it's not. So I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Agreed.
Well, I do want to respond to that. What I want to say is if, because I was on the council when all of this took place. This was my first, one of the first big things that I dealt with and it came, we were coming on the back of two 500-year floods over the course of some, something like 12 months. And we had no stormwater master plan. We had no Kathy. We had no, uh, idea really of what our stormwater infrastructure was. But what we did know is that when it rains a whole lot, our city floods. And, uh, we knew that there was in, uh, significant stormwater, um, maintenance problems. And so the impetus for the $5 fee was really, uh, it had a lot to do with, look, we have to start taking care of our stormwater infrastructure. And you are correct that at the time, we, you know, the council, you know, we really didn't understand just how much stormwater infrastructure there was or the difference between, uh, the types of stormwater infrastructures and what the fee specifically was going for and what it specifically was not, or even if it was said, you know, there was, uh, probably some translation challenges, you know, there, you know, because I know at the time there was, uh, there was a belief that the $5 fee would be enough to take care of the whole thing, which I think is what, uh, you're, you're referring to, you know, that was the, that was the mentality at that time. But even then, you know, that the scope of the projects that we're talking about here is not a scope that was really being discussed at that time. The $19 million, all the, all the projects to, you know, to really bring everything back to zero. You know, this has evolved into a, you know, into a policy or a document or an understanding of our issues that really is, is broader and deeper than, you know, than we've ever had. The issue's always been here. We're just now finally, uh, thanks in large part to Kathy and, uh, to half and associates and the $5 fee, we finally are able to, to truly quantify the, the breadth and depth of the challenges that we have with stormwater.
And I, and I do understand that. I'm just saying, I, I want, let's learn from this mistake.
Sure.
And let's not do it again, is what I'm saying. That's it.
Anything else to add?
One thing I would like to add at the bottom of this slide is the green, uh, green trails HOA update. We have gotten some information and the gist of it is that the city could probably continue to maintain the detention pond without anybody questioning or even maybe, um, trying to stop us. There's some legal stuff behind this situation and it appears, Paige, I don't know if you can maybe speak a little bit more to the email that we received regarding, sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Well, yeah, I think my colleague at the office, Veronica, was the one that handled that.
Okay.
So I don't have that at my fingertips. Other than, uh, I think she reviewed that and addressed it and, and put the language in there that you need to have in there to be able to access those drainage ways.
Okay. Pretty much the HOA is defunct. And so it might be in the city's best interest to just go ahead and maintain it until somebody says, "That's my property," which there's other things that could go into someone saying that.
And this is the one just south of Mason Wood, um, up against Lehman?
Isn't that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah. I think this involves a broader conversation outside this.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Any further thoughts? Harper?
Well, I just wanted to give you real quick, I, I'm the prior director before me, who worked with us as well as the inspector, um, he was prior director for years here. I can tell you, Ms. Shield, that, um, the city didn't do any of the drainage. So when you talk about the HOAs and there's, they didn't do it. We've had many talks on that in the past, nor did Boots Monahue prior to him. So I just make sure you understood that as well. Thank you.
And one other thing I did want to bring up just real quick is, um, because you just reminded me of another issue for the city to be able to get into some of those drainage easements.
Yes, ma'am.
Because of the, um, uh.
The.
Crossbars and such that are up against the street. They would actually have to go onto a homeowner's property, go around and go into, so on, they would have to actually go onto their front yard, go around and go into the drainage ditch to get into that drainage ditch for not just that person's property, but a couple of people down, down the road. I remembered you showing me that as well.
You're exactly right. For some of the newer council members, um, the drainage easement, if there is a drainage easement, that easement is about the, the narrow width of that drainage. So in order to access it from the public streets, you have to go into somebody's private property yard, um, through their yard with the equipment and everything to try to get down into those drainage easements. So we don't have access of many of those places, just so y'all are aware.
It is exactly the problem caused by starting with no regulations, moving through time, having developments happen that aren't really thinking about stormwater. Build, starting to build stormwater infrastructure and then starting to regulate stormwater infrastructure and then retroactively try to fix problems that we didn't solve preemptively when the opportunity was there. So we're just trying to fix mistakes.
Previously, what happens on those situations, the homeowner owns to the middle of that drainage ditch and then the other side owns to the middle. They're supposed to maintain it in a, uh, you know, combined effort there. But, you know, over time, it, it doesn't happen.
Lots of problems for us to solve with no easy solutions. I'm not so sure that the, uh, on a few of the areas that we know, we were never going to be able to see eye to eye on, we may just have to bite the bullet, condemn the easement, use the policies in place to give us the access and go in and maintain it ourselves. I'm not sure how fair that is, but, um, another stormwater infrastructure is an entire system and you can't allow for a system to be compromised based on fairness. You have to uphold it at all costs if you want to prevent the flooding that we've seen historically, so.
All right. You just looking for 15 and 16 for approval tonight?
Correct.
All right. If there are no other comments, I'm going to make a motion to approve agenda items number 15 and 16.
Good.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo, that we approve agenda items number 15 and 16. Is there any further discussion?
Would it move us to, because I know we've given some recommendations on at least the easement maintenance policy. Should we get those back before voting on adopting this policy? Or are we comfortable with adopting the policy, getting the changes made and then?
What changes? I'm sorry, I didn't. The only change I was talking about were, is in item number 17, where it's just the updates.
Gotcha. I guess the one I'm referring to specifically was the sedimentation part of the maintenance.
You're wanting to remove that?
Well, I think it's something, I, I think Councilmember Rizzo brings up a good point about the silt. And I think right now, as the policy is written, it states that the property owner would be responsible for removing sedimentation. That's what the policy states.
Right. We can remove it if we want, but we'll, we'll need to understand that by removing it, what we're saying is that sedimentation is not the responsibility. And there are hundreds and hundreds of stormwater systems in the city that by taking it out that we're adopting as, uh, the policy for us to maintain, so.
How do we, uh, how would we keep it in play and still come back for more assessment to understand how we're going to enforce that piece? I think it needs some more consideration. I think that's what, that's what we're saying, right?
Not taking it out, just seeing how we can clarify it.
How about we approve it as is and then, uh, we can give Kathy direction to, um, see if she can come up with some kind of a hybrid policy, not necessarily in an ordinance revision, but a kind of a hybrid policy similar to what we do with the sidewalks. Sediment can be our sidewalks, you know, um, finding a way to utilize our resources maybe to help in certain cases. Would that be acceptable?
I'm amenable to that.
Councilor.
You only got to talk.
Okay, yeah, apparently. I, I'm sorry, I have a habit of just raising my hand and waiting.
Councilor Shield.
All right. I just want to make sure if this is adopted tonight, that, um, we make sure we get out there and educate and educate, educate, educate and get the word out of what the HOA's responsibilities are, the individual homeowner's responsibilities are. And also, uh, I guess I'm, I'm looking at one drainage easement right now. It's the one in between, um, uh, it's kind of the Mason Wood, uh, kind of subdivision and, um, and Prairie on the Creek where half of the drainage easement is maintained and beautifully done. And then the other one has trees in it. And there's no way those homeowners can get in there and clear it out. So I guess we still haven't answered the question on whether or not we go in and help them get it to zero for those individual homeowners or not.
So, so my question really on that is, are we talking policy? All right, are we talking, like, what is our official policy on this? Or are we talking, what are we going to do with these couple of problem spots that we know about?
Pretty much, what are we going to do with these couple of problem spots to get them to zero, to allow them to maintain and mow? Because they couldn't mow this.
Or is it possible those are separate issues?
I'm, I'm not sure really if, if it's separate issues because they can't maintain it if they can't get to it. I mean, I think you remember seeing this picture in my original set of slides.
We, we can't get to it and homeowners can't get to it?
You know, this is a, I'm sorry, this is a difficult question that, that, that y'all are facing. It really is because, because where do you start and where do you stop? It's not just the place you're talking about. You know, we have many of those all over town. So if you do this one, then when the next people say, "Well, what about mine? You didn't do mine." Then we start that ball rolling.
But we get that on the sidewalks all the time, aren't we? We get this, and we're managing and we're seeing, you know?
And, and I, I think we just need to all be, as somebody said before, on the same page. If we're all on the same page and there's a plan and we're going to follow this plan and that's what we do, then great. But, um, we definitely need to, we, you, you know, have to make, make the decision and decide what we're going to do and then, and then we're, we'll do whatever. We'll, we'll roll forward with what we have and try to do whatever we can.
I think right now we're just working on the policy part of it right now, try to get that established and then, uh, see where we can help out in the problem areas and that, like this, like she said, this is a living document. We can, we can work with it.
You're right.
We, we can adjust. So look, I think we, uh, need to, uh, work on the policy, get it in place and then go back and revisit, you know, any, any problem areas we have.
Yes, sir, you're right. Just I wanted, that policy too, though, depending on what you say on that policy, like to maintain. If you define maintaining as this, then that's going to do this. If you define it as this, then that can be this. So there, there's a lot involved here.
Yeah.
Different things that y'all are, y'all are having to deal with as well as us. We deal with it on a regular basis, but y'all are making the decision.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harper. Any other thoughts? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, uh, six to zero. If there's no objections, I'm going to go and bring up agenda item number 21. We've got some folks here waiting. I know they want to hear us have a conversation about that. All right, so I'm going to bring up agenda item number 21, in ordinance of the city of Kyle, Texas, making findings of fact determining the number of inhabitants in the city of Kyle and providing for related matters. This is as relates to, uh, defining our ETJ as a city of 50,000 residents. Mr. Sellers.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and our guests, especially those from out of town. I know there are probably a few other places you like to be at nine o'clock on Tuesday night, but, uh, thank you for sticking with us. My name is Scott Sellers. I'm the city manager for the record. You have before you the first reading of the ordinance determining the number of inhabitants in the city of Kyle. We in Kyle have probably the most accurate numbers of our population of any source. We keep very meticulous records of building permits, single family, multifamily, uh, as well as we reach out regularly to our outside of city or sometimes inside of city utility providers. We also maintain utility accounts for our residences. So, uh, we make it a habit very frequently to look at our numbers, our population. We felt pretty confident, uh, in the last quarter of, uh, last year, fourth quarter of, of 2019, that we had hit 50,000, but wanted to be sure before bringing numbers forward. We've spent time verifying our figures again internally and with our external utility providers. Some of the questions brought forward relate to how we arrive at the methodology. Again, we look at, uh, the size of a residence, uh, both single and multifamily. Those give us certain numbers based on household size, uh, population size, inhabitants, uh, number of inhabitants, et cetera. So, uh, we, you know, the household implies that, uh, the people may not be related. So there was a question earlier about family size versus household size and that's the distinguishing factor there. There are certain numbers that we've also used over the years to determine our, our population count, our inhabitant count, if you will. And the reason I, I continue to clarify inhabitants versus population is that the city has the legal authority to determine number of inhabitants, which also determines the ETJ. The census, uh, determines population size, which does not determine ETJ. So inhabitants is what this ordinance is certifying. As we look at the factors that go into number of inhabitants, uh, we can rely on some of these other numbers. 3.51 is a number that was used in 2010. 3.51 is a number that was used in 2010. We've seen other numbers used throughout the years by different agencies, some as low as 3.24, but typically you're in the 3.2 to 3.5 range. When you add up our number of units in the city, even multiplying by 3.24, we are over 50,000. So, the 3.51 followed the ordinance that we were provided by, by legal, as well as the number from the census, so we felt comfortable using that number. However, we also factored in a 5% vacancy rate, to be sure, for our single family, and then a 4% vacancy rate for our apartment units. So again, we, we wanted to make sure that, and we put in a buffer. The, the ETJ, as the state of Texas, as the statute is concerned, automatically bumps out when you hit certain populations, so 50,000, we move from a two-mile ETJ extraterritorial jurisdiction to a 3.5-mile ETJ. That is just a statutory increase. We are not attempting a, any sort of a land grab, if you will. As a matter of fact, the state of Texas created very certain and strict rules about annexation in the last legislative session, so this does not imply annexation of any sort, it is, again, a natural increase based on population size. However, there are a few regulations that do come with residing within an ETJ, such as subdivision regs, site development, plats, signage, those are kind of the three biggies. The question was raised, why now? There are several reasons. Again, we have been looking at this number for a while. One of the, the big reasons that we have been watching this number with much earnest over the last several years is in our economic development efforts, there is a, a real push once you have 50,000 inhabitants for a different type of economic development, different type of retail, different type of restaurants. We know in our surveys that we've issued over the years, that the top desire from a retail standpoint are certain family dining or high-end dining type of restaurants that we have very much struggled to bring to Kyle. Now that we have hit this next threshold of 50,000 inhabitants, we've, are much more confident, again per industry, that we will start seeing different tier of dining establishments. But that also does go to other retail. We also see in our list of, of certain stores that our residents are looking for, that as we've reached out to those, those establishments, those, those corporations, they have told us that we are not yet at a certain population threshold. In many instances, that has been 50,000 for our inhabitants. So, we, we felt like, as we round out our decennial census, 2020 census, it is a great time to put this on the radar of our economic development partners, again, from a retail, but also from an industrial standpoint. And we know with some of our new spec industrial, that these numbers are very important to them, and some of our other projects that we're working on. We also, as, as a city hits 50,000 inhabitants, we qualify for CDBG funds. We become what's known as an entitlement community, and that is something that we have obviously never received these funds from the federal government before. There's always talk about those funds going away, maybe they will, maybe they won't, but right now they are in play, and those funds go directly toward programs, initiatives, other expenditures that benefit low to moderate income individuals or households. So, we wanted to make sure that we got on the radar as soon as possible. That was a very defensible number, so that we could now begin the process of, of being an entitlement community for CDBG. So, with that said, yes, the census in April will have a number for all of the communities, that will be a population estimate, and we're confident that that number will also be over 50,000. Will it be the exact number in our inhabitants ordinance tonight? Probably not, again. They will have some sort of a methodology, a factor that may be 3.51, it may be a little less, we're not sure yet, we have not been told, but we're very confident that the population number will also substantiate our inhabitant number. And with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sellers? Councilor Ellison?
Just reiterating some points you made, Mr. Sellers, you said the big three, four, as far as city regulation in an ETJ, were signage, subdivision development, what was the third one?
Site development.
Site development. And I appreciate your clarification on this, it is not an annexation, and that these folks that are in the ETJ aren't in the city limits of Kyle, and therefore not paying city taxes, and therefore not also receiving those city services. Okay. And thank you for the clarification between the population and, and inhabitants and things like that. I think even Paige was shaking her head on those definitions and the clarification between those, so makes me feel a little more comfortable about it, so thank you.
I might also add, as you're looking at those notes, the, in many cases, the postal service really sets their own boundaries, if you will, for addressing. They go by zip code and other areas, so for example, we have areas in the city of Kyle that are in Buta postal area, or in Niederwald, San Marcos, right? I look at my Weather Channel app, and I'm in Niederwald, right, and I live in, in Kyle, so the, the postmaster general would need to change addresses to reflect the, the city where you reside, and, you know, there, there's been no indication that that would be done with this move. As a matter of fact, if it were to be done, we have other areas, again, in the city that would take far more priority than some of these areas out in the ETJ.
Interesting point. So, for the folks that traveled all this way to come to our council meeting, and we appreciate that, so those would be, so those three that you identified would be the biggest factors that if anything were to change for those individuals, it would be something along those lines, but you don't see anything changing as far as their address and other things like that. Thank you.
I have, I have one, one thing to add, which is why I generally always support expansion of our ETJ, which is different than expansion of our corporate, incorporated city limits. It's one of those three that you mentioned, subdivision regulations, which means that someone can't come in and parcel down to very small lots without approval from the city council. So, I want to explain, my, my experience has been really twofold. The further out into the ETJ that we get, there are large-track property owners that from time to time have a need to split their property in half, or in three ways, because they want to add another house, or various other factors associated with ranchland community lifestyles. I've yet to see anything other than pretty, pretty near instantaneous and unanimous support for such a subdivision to happen. Conversely, the development community has, for as long as I've been in the city of Kyle, pursued developments in ETJs, and in particular, outside of the, any jurisdictional control, because it allows for them to develop as densely as they want, with virtually no regulation whatsoever. And the ETJ regulation is not much, like you said, it's very, it's very limited, but the subdivision statute that allows for us to, it gives us the opportunity to prevent development where it, it really shouldn't go, because it, it creates the suburban or urban sprawl, and a problem that we experience in the city of Kyle. So, in my, in my mind, if you feel like you live in Wimberly, then you live in Wimberly; if you feel like you live in San Marcos, you live in San Marcos. If you live in San Marcos but think you live in Kyle, like in Blanco Vista, then that, that's fine too. There's, there's really very little change that happens when an ETJ expands, but the one, the one change that is most compelling to me is the ability to limit growth, because the thing I hear the most and have heard for, you know, near, you know, four years, has been, you know, what are you gonna do to slow the growth? And this council has, has had a pretty good history of being very reticent to approve developments way out in the ETJ, for a variety of reasons. I'm sure you can figure what the majority of those are, but hyper-dense development three, four miles out of town is not necessarily something that benefits anyone, and if they're not in our ETJ, or in anyone's ETJ, then there, there's no regulate, regulatory body they have to go to. They can generally just build whatever they want. Massive trailer parks, and various other kinds of subdivisions that, you know, we would like to be able to limit, you know, so that's a compelling reason for me. But it's not, it's not taxing, it's not annexation, it's a very limited amount of control over a larger geographic area, which I think is, I think is in the best interest of the, the entire region for us to pursue. Those are just my thoughts. Any other comments or thoughts? All right, I will motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Mayor, are you finally passing this, or?
Is there any objection to this being finally passed? No objection.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Agenda Item Number 18, Consideration of Nominations for Appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission to Fill Vacancies. We have a new council member here.
Mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and recuse myself from this item.
Okay. Councilor Coates recusing himself. We have, we have a new council member on board. Before I started the process and of going through and doing interviews for, to fill the vacancy, because we have a new council member, I wanted to bring this item back for reconsideration, and make sure that this body is still wanting to move forward in the same direction. Before we can bring it up, we do have to have an actual vote to reconsider the item, so the, the first vote will just be to have a discussion on it. With that, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the item. It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Ellison, that we reconsider Agenda Item Number 18. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six to zero. All right, so the item is up, there's really not a lot to it. My opinion hasn't changed on, on the subject. Is there anyone that wishes to say anything? Councilwoman Rizzo.
Just real quick, I guess it's for Mr. Sellers. If you just wanna clarify what the process is for bringing a candidate up for consideration of PNC, just so everybody will get a refresh on it, please.
So, we, we have a, an adopted board and commission ordinance that I, oh boy, you're gonna tax me on this, but I think it was 2016.
16.
In that process, any candidate, so if there's a vacancy, we will advertise that vacancy online, we usually put it in the newspaper, especially if it's a planning zoning vacancy. Those applicants are then screened and brought forward for interviews with an interviewing body that would consist of the mayor, or his appointee, his or her appointee, city manager, his or her appointee, and director of community development, his or her appointee. Those interviews are typically made, you know, as a, as a group, and again, I wanna say as a group, you know, in, in an evening, where, where everyone can be present, and then brought forward to the council. So, it, it goes through a, a vetting process from a staff review to an interview process, and then ultimately brought forward for city council recommendation and approval.
Thank you. One of the things that I, I really look forward for PNC is, is for a PNC that represents the entire city, and, you know, I, I can't stress enough how important that is, you know, that we, when we do the vetting process, that we make sure that we're covering every part of the city that we can. I know it's hard, because we don't, not everybody wants to apply for this, because it is a lot of work, understand that, but we really gotta make sure that we're doing a great, our diligence to make sure that we're representing the entire city as best as possible when we bring in these applicants. With this being said, I, I really think that serving on PNC takes a certain type of person, because it, it is a hard job, there's a lot of time involved, and anyone that applies for it, I think realizes that, and they, I really hope that it's, because they wanna benefit their neighbors, is what I always hope for. So, one of the things that I, I did today was I made sure that I, I'm gonna, and I'm gonna start doing this with a lot more of our people that come up for consideration, is that I reached out to Mr. Gerda today and had a really good conversation with him, and I'm glad that he represents a, a part of the east side that has very little representation. When speaking with him, he's very passionate about his, his part of town, and doesn't plan on going anywhere. So I really liked that I was able to sit down with him, talk to him, and really vent some of the things that I, I'd love to see out of PNC, and asked him what he'd like to see out of council, so we had a pretty good conversation. After our conversation, I left there feeling a little better. One of the things I don't like is surprises. Last time his name came up, I had, I got hit by a surprise, and I didn't like that. I'm, I'm not crazy about surprises, so I made sure I reached out to Mr. Gerda, went by and talked to him, and I think he's a pretty good candidate, but I, I just want to remind everyone that as we're going through this PNC process, we gotta make sure that we represent all the city, the entire city. So, we gotta make sure we continue to do that, especially because it's a, it's a board, it's not council representation, where everybody appoints somebody to it like we would on our, you know, different committees, but I guess this is something we really need to address and make sure that the entire city is being represented. But with that being said, I, I just wanted to say, had a good conversation, and thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or thoughts?
I had the, the same opportunity to have conversations with them on multiple occasions, and I asked very specific questions, and I understand you guys go through the vetting process, but again, I took it upon myself to ask the questions and concerns that I felt like I needed to address. I believe that Mr. Gerda understands the position, understands what the commitment is, understands a lot of the issues in the city, and furthermore, asking a lot of the different questions on what he wants to accomplish and, and what his positionings are for all the different growth in, in the city, and he has a good grasp of, of all those. And not to mention that represents a, a part of the city that has not had that representation, and we've been working hard to get to that. So, after several conversations with him, I, I believe that, that I would affirm his, his appointment to the seat.
Motion to approve? It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Ellison. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Councilwoman Ellison, you wanna go grab?
Yeah.
I'm gonna, if there's no objections, I'm gonna skip to item number 20. I think that one's a little more important than number 19 at this point in time. Construction, Agenda Item Number 20, Construction Manager at Risk, Request for Proposals for the Police Headquarters Construction. Councilmember Villalobos?
I think in our last meeting, we had to, we're trying to make a decision on, on which way we would represent the project to ensure a certain level of commitment to the time period and cost, and we felt, well, I felt in discussions of this, that bringing it forward to the, to the council is to have that conversation with regards to a council, a construction manager at risk. I think, you know, some of the positive sides of having this person implemented, or having an agreement of a company that would do that, are, you know...
an agreement of a company that would do that are, are, you know, the, the construction is managed based on the documents at the time that they're, that they're approved. Um, and they're also based on specs, and they're also based on a timeline. Um, they're also based on a maximum amount that you would, that, that would be costing for the property. And I think it's a, it's a, it's a certain level of commitment and, and accountability as going through that process, is there's gonna be a cap amount, it needs to be done within that, that time period as well. And I think it's the best way, based on just pure resource of the city, to manage a pro- a project as, as important as this one is. So I believe it's, it's something that, again, that after careful consideration and conversation and bringing it forward to the council, I think it's something that we need to, to consider. And, um, uh, we also have a representative from, from PGAL that we've had conversations with, and do you have any commentary with regards to this direction?
Uh, yeah, sure. Uh, for the record, uh, my name is Chris Rubus with PGAL Architects. Um, it's good to be here to talk about CMT risk as a model, uh, how a city delivers a project is important discussion, and it's actually great that we're discussing it so early. Um, when the police item for PGAL's contract was approved, it was talked about of getting cost certainty.
Sure.
For the citizens and the bond election. And so as we looked at the schedule, we thought, man, CMT risk is a great option. Uh, big picture, um, this delivery method is really great in, uh, the world of let's be a team. Owner, architect, contractor, three legs of the stool, let's get all three on the same page right from the start. Um, so the idea is that CMT risk could be procured over the course of the next month or two. Get them on board in the spring, uh, be there to sit with all of us, uh, talk about, um, cost, cost estimates, schedule, materials, and then forge a path to, with the construction manager risk term is really the idea that they are on board to form a guaranteed maximum price. Uh, so the big picture is, hey, somewhere late summer, let's take the state of the drawings and let's have the contractor form a guaranteed maximum price that then you can tell the voters, here's the project, here's what it looks like, and here's the cost that goes with it. Uh, but other great elements of construction manager risk in, in the, it gives you guys the power to select a great contractor. Uh, you'll be asking them for qualifications of their staff, uh, similar projects, safety record, financial information, um, and even their fee percentage. Um, and so you guys can look at all those submissions and pick who you wanna work with. Um, we had, we do feel like you'll get, uh, great contractors, a great interest, and a great turn-in for the project, uh, so that'll be a big benefit. So you guys get to pick that contractor, cause in busy times, if you, you know, in the low bid world, who knows what, who submits and who gets that low bid. Um, so we do think it's great for the city teamwork and that roadmap to getting a guaranteed maximum price, uh, there in time to get it, uh, in the bond process as we work towards November.
So it's a critical piece with regards to the timelines of this particular project, and then our discussions here, is that we have to meet certain timelines. This puts us in a vehicle to do that. Uh, it supports, you know, collaboration across the stakeholders and responsible parties for the project, um, and it's something that's consistent, you know, some of the, some of the negatives on, on, on some of this really considers itself on the, on the council that's, uh, that's promoting it, is that, you know, there's, there's another level of communication needs to be had. But with the current council and the way that, uh, you know, we operate, there's no way around collaboration and communication with regards to this project and the pipelines. I mean, just, it's something we, 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 we've defeated the, the negative on, on, on CMT at risk, so, um, appreciate that. There, I, I know that there's already been some collaboration on some other individuals re, you know, that are interested in, in collaborating with this project, and that's BOTEX, and that was the question I wanted to ask earlier. I understand that, that there was a meeting, can you give me some brief update?
Yeah, brief update, uh, let's, a BOTEX update and then a CMT risk update in relation to that.
Sure.
I believe CMT risk is the best route to consider and use alternative construction methods, uh, because they can be there to talk about early on, to talk about pros and cons, cost deltas, and buy in and endorse it as well, versus a low bid where bidders maybe fear things different than the norm.
Mm-huh.
Uh, so I think it's a great avenue to potentially, uh, use a product like BOTEX. Uh, an update from BOTEX, we actually had a good conversation with them today, and they, uh, they've reported that, in essence, the entire building perimeter can be their block and replace the outer ring of, uh, steel columns, um, except for the central tower element.
Sure.
Which is, you know, more glass and, uh, so, uh, that was great news that they could replace that outer perimeter of steel. And, um, we are, we invited them to meet with us and our structural engineer, uh, next week, uh, to start that, uh, coordination. And so, big picture to that point, with the CMT risk, when they come on board there in the spring, we'd have them look at it, understand it, get comfortable with it, and then help the city with any cost deltas information they might want.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are we taking on, uh, are we gonna take action on that particular item?
Yep.
Go that direction?
Go for it.
Like to make, making a, a motion to approve, um, uh, I guess the search process or the actual?
The RFP.
The RFP for the construction manager at risk, the proposal of the police headquarters.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by, uh, Councilmember Villalobos, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. Is there any further discussion? I think it's fantastic.
Yeah, just.
About BOTEX in particular, I can't wait to show off locally what they can do, cause this is a local manufacturer of a product that essentially can replace, uh, a lot of the layers that go into walls with.
It eliminates, uh, studs, sheathing, bad insulation, and, uh, you know.
Yeah, it's, it seems to be revolutionary to me. I'm glad Councilmember Villalobos has been staying on top of trying to get them here, because we have a local, uh, uh, manufacturer just right down the, the street, and so I hope we can make something work with them, so.
I think for us, we'll just work with, uh, the city management and page and, uh, talk about getting that RFQ advertised and out on the street.
Sure.
And, uh, talk about when we get those contractors to turn, then the submittals, and then the city will be in position to review and grade and interview and select.
And you're, you're exactly right, though, because the, the CMT risk is the best way to handle something like that, because without that component, I can see how it would be much.
Yeah, you need all three, yeah.
The communication is very important, and somebody who's communicating, uh, very strongly on behalf of the owners.
Yep.
So, any further?
Thanks, everybody.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Chris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. All right, uh, lastly, agenda item number nineteen, creation of an arts, culture, and events task force. Uh, I believe this was, uh, put on here because we asked to bring it back. Is that, is that right, Scott? I don't, it's got my name on it, but I don't know a whole lot about it.
Just checking with Kathy to see if we need to jump back to seventeen also. I think we, we left that one unfinished. Uh, during the, uh, council retreat, we had talked a little bit about our arts, our culture as a community, and, uh, also how our events, uh, fit within that, basically our, our community identity. And it was recommended that, uh, we look at some of these areas and wrap those up into a task force made up of council members, uh, where we can look at the, uh, spring event. I, I see Rebecca's, has left us now. Talk about the spring event, uh, the fall event for our, our two signature events, as well as the creation of certain arts programs that may benefit the downtown or the community at large. Uh, and then, you know, just overall, our community culture, you know, signage, et cetera. So, uh, those were three kind of buckets that didn't have more formal oversight or direction from council, and, and we felt like it would be a good idea to bring a task force together.
Okay. Is there anyone, uh, that wants to volunteer for that? Do you, do y'all think this is the time to, to do that, or should we be looking at another avenue? Councilmember Shield.
First of all, I do want to be a part of this. Um, second of all, I do think it's a good time. Um, pie in the sky is only, uh, six, seven months away, so I think we really do need to have a special events and, you know, and with the arts and culture, just to make sure everything ties in, starting this year, and also helping out with, you know, a spring event, and also some other ideas that council wants to, um, incorporate into events and, you know, bringing back our culture. And so, uh, I think right now is a good time for this.
Uh, I might add that I believe the downtown plan, the downtown area was, was part of the, this arts and cultural piece as well, so we'd be looking at some of the recommendations from Texas Downtown Association.
So, so I guess I'm still, I'm just, I'm a little confused, cause arts, culture, and events, those are three big buckets.
They're huge buckets.
So I'm not exactly sure what the group would be tasked with. We're talking about councilmembers, wha- wha- what are we, what are we driving for here? Are we trying to get more art in the city? I mean, I know what we're trying to get, but what I'm saying is, I, I don't wanna create a, a, necessarily a committee or a task force or a group of council members without a very clearly defined, this is really what we're trying to accomplish. So far, it's, you know, our, you know, committee, subcommittees or, or whatever we call them, task force steering committees have worked really well, because they've had a very narrowly defined vision, uh, and also kind of an end date and objective for what we're trying to accomplish. This seems to be more of a perennial type of group, and I'm just not sure.
I think.
I'm not sure what we're, what we're doing here. Councilmember Villalobos.
I think, uh, our discussions were that we have allowed certain events and cultural appreciation, along with some of the arts that come along with some of those events that we've historically had in our, in our community. And, um, I think that the task force is, is, is one that's, that's, that's here, number one, to, when we talk about, um, raising our standards across the board with regards to all different aspects of city, our city government, we're talking about events that show a certain level of appreciation of why Kyle is Kyle, right? So having that in our, our participation as council members is to, number one, use as a resource, cause a lot of times we have resources that maybe the staff members do not have. Number two is ensuring that the event is considerate of those particular pieces of culture, right? So we have the pie in the sky, but there are other things that we could bring forward that would help bring, uh, more people to that, be more of a diverse population to the event as well, is increasing that piece. Whether it's an addition of, of a certain sub-event within the, the main event, right? That kind of pulls, you know, certain different themes throughout the different days of those events. The downtown sector and having some of the festivals. You know, one of the, one of the, the cultural things that I, that I, that I pointed out, and everybody brought up their own when we were discussing this, is that the history of, of, of the, uh, of the Latino population in this particular area, and, and why a lot of the different things were here, and what their participation is in here. Some of those events were, were barbecue cook-offs. One of those specifically was the Fajita Fest, and I'll tell you, that particular event went to Buta. And, you know, if you can feel the passion coming out of my voice, is that how did we ever let that go is unbeknownst to me, but I think that's a recirculation of understanding is like, this is bringing it back to what establishes community, what brought people together, what the discussions of the culture and the arts and, and the appreciation of, of, of our participation in this community, it highlights it. And there's gonna be opportunities for different people that have had really good, uh, that have left an indelible legacy to our community, right? So it's just, those are things that we all have the opportunity to do. And I think if, if we start off with one task force, it's gonna be organic, right? So it can change. Be a rotation of people coming in and, and with regards to the, the, the council members and staff members, and maybe some of our, our citizens, too, is that, you know, we, we come together and help our staff provide an event that we feel as though, at the end of the day, it's touching the different parts that we feel are necessary for a successful event, that touches on those things that we feel like are still missing. So that, that's part of it, it's just not gonna assess what. I, I, I would say, if you were looking at it, I would liken it up to an advisory kind of council, right? Is that, hey, this is the event, this is the overall theme, you have individuals there that have buy-in to the event, they're looking at, have you touched this part, have you touched this part, have you touched this part? Making sure that it aligns with that, but it also is, is all encompassing with the, with the population here. And that it's always touching on something that is, is a legacy issue, a historical issue of the community.
So, so what I would say is, I, obviously I agree with everything you're saying. This particular item, creation of an arts, culture, and events task force is so broad that I'm not sure what the, the, what the goal of the group would be in a, like I said, in a narrowly defined way. So for example, if there was something comparable to a Fajita Fest that you were wanting to pursue, um, I think it would be great to create, I.
Sure.
Say, we're gonna take, uh, one, two, or three council members that have that drive, that know exactly what they're wanting to pursue, cause what's made these, uh, steering committees or whatever we call them, uh, what's made them so great is, is they've been council-initiated visions that we have, that we're, we're putting our heads together, and we know what we're trying to accomplish. So that's, I, I wanna, I'm just careful, I wanna be careful that we don't get away from that, where we just start meeting to meet, cause we meet so much right now. Kathy's items have been postponed so many times because we've had so much going on, we haven't been able to, to get to them. I know how busy everyone is with their schedules, I wanna make sure that when, when we officially commission a group, that we have a, an objective for them. Councilmember Shield.
Um, so to pretty much just give a scope for this, I think primarily it is to, um, help bring in our, the arts and the culture of this city into pie in the sky, to help Sarah make pie in the sky the absolute best it can be. That can be the goal for the group now. But I think this can grow into a, a board later on, where we still talk about, you know, we have a group of residents who really want to help keep the culture in this city, and also improve, you know, our arts, um, lifestyle, even though Paul has done a great job at the, uh, library to the best of his benef-, you know, ability, but it can still grow, and input from our residents, possibly at a later date, can only improve it. So I think for a goal for this task force right now is to pretty much just try to help, you know, incorporate arts and culture into pie in the sky, to make it the best it can be, and then see where that takes us, and go from there.
Yeah, I, I think you hit on something very keen, uh, Councilmember Shield, is that we really wanted to help create this to, uh, capitalize on a lot of the skillsets that we have in our community. People that have been professionals in these particular areas for years, and that we all have knowledge of, and that we can bring forward, and they're all willing to be, participate in some of these, some of these larger events as well. Um, with the planning process, logistical pieces, I mean, it, we have, we have a, a, we have a huge bank of experience that lives in our city that have hundreds of years of experience in other entities, and I think we can, this is an opportunity to, to capital- capitalize on that as well, through this particular organization. Now, I even see it at some point turning into something that, you know, we have a city building, and we're trying to establish what the theme and the art pieces are gonna be, or the park, or something that, that we're doing, is looking at those particular things, making sure that we're touching all those aspects, and calling upon people that specialize, subject matter experts from the, from our community to say, hey, what do y'all, can you give us some of your feedback on this, to make sure that we're addressing it appropriately? So, I mean, those, those are all different opportunities with this, but right now, task-oriented, the next large event, start off from there, and then we start planning for the next event. So.
I, I just wanna agree with that. I think we should go event, for my event right now, just to, uh, see where it goes, see where this task force will, you know, best be suited to help out with the different events. I think Sarah does a great job, but everybody always needs help. I'll tell you what, when it goes to, uh, planning, creating, and setting up an event, it takes, it takes a team, it takes a big team. Uh, when you throw it all on one person, that's a lot to ask for anyone, you know, so I'm, I'm glad that we, we wanna come out as council members, we, uh, wanna come out and help, uh, with all the different projects that are coming around in the city, whether it's an event or something that's going on, but one of the things, um, I'm gonna tell you right now, is that the more help in an, in event, the better off it's gonna be. And you can create, make a really, really good event by planning, and events, all, all remember, when you're putting an event together, it takes a year to put an event together. You're not gonna do it in a couple of months. Always remember that it takes planning, it takes logistics, it takes, you know, collaboration with not just the city, but with people and the residents. You've gotta sell it to the residents first if you want it to be a really good, uh, what do you call it? Uh, an event. with not just the city, but with people and the residents. You've got to sell it to the residents first if you want it to be a really good, what do you call it? An event. And that's one of the things you have to do is get the buy-in from your community. Once you get that buy-in from the community, you're going to get other people coming out from other communities, because word spreads fast once you get that buy-in. And that's what makes a good event. You've got to put in the planning, put in the time and make sure that you're taking in enough input from people that have the experience that have done this in time. But I, I think it's a great way to start, is start off with a task force and see where it develops from there.
So, so is the goal to, Councilor Tobias?
I think this, what we're trying to get at is that there's so much talent out here in Kyle. There's musicians, there's artists, there's painters, there's poet readers out here in Kyle. And it's just probably just a matter of trying to find a way to bring them all together on that and, and exposing their, their professionalism, their professional art that they have. And so I, I think what we're all trying to get at is saying, well, we can plan all these events, but I would like to be able to try to reach out to the local artists that are here, see what they have to say, maybe possibly get them more involved and showing their talent and we can go from there on that end. As far as the, and as far as the Pie in the Sky, it's a great starting point. And then as the year progresses next year, we can start adding more Mexican-American culture, more German cultures, whatever cultures that we have here in Kyle and encourage them to be part of the city in just different areas. That's the way I look at it.
Thoughts?
I'm hearing a couple of different things. So I'm, I'm, I'm with you guys on some stuff and other stuff, I'm still confused a little bit, but what I, what I hear from Councilmember Schill is she's looking to create more of a, a group of citizens, maybe like a volunteer group that oversees sights and sounds, or not. I served on that committee.
All right, what time is it? I'm going to timestamp that. Nine thirty-eight PM. Noted.
Pie in the Sky, which sights and sounds had a large group of the community that would come together and, and run that, that event. So that's kind of what I'm understanding from, from Councilmember Schill, and correct me if I'm wrong. What I'm hearing from other council members is visioning and maybe some policy in place to help make other events in the city have the best chance of success. I'm in favor of, of all of it. I think you have to go about it different ways. I do think that this, this item is, is way too broad because arts and culture mean a lot of things to me, not just, you know, the event side of it. It can go to actual physical art within the, within the community. I do think we need to focus on culture in this town. I think that, that, that there's been a lot that's been lost or, you know, not, not paid attention to, that I've enjoyed great conversations with other council members here about aspects of our history that I didn't know about and that are very exciting and should be celebrated. So if Councilmember Schill wants to put together a task force that concentrates on Pie in the Sky and somehow morphs into bringing in other members of the public to create a big committee that helps run the event and, and helps Sarah with, with needs, because this is Sarah's baby, then, then that's fine. I mean, with collaboration with Sarah and, and her leadership on that, I'm all for that. I'm also all for Councilmember Villalobos and Councilmember Rizzo's desire to get back festivals that are rightfully ours as a city. So however they want to break that down is fine, but I am a little bit hesitant to say one task force oversees all of this. It, it doesn't quite make sense to me.
Yeah, that was, that was a better way of saying it than what I was going to say. Just essentially, when we're talking Pie in the Sky, that's, and I think what I've heard Sarah say, she's looking to have a, like an events board that helps with fundraising and coordination to help take some of that, you know, one man ban syndrome. Sarah, do you want to add anything to that? But, no?
Yeah, I agree with what you guys are saying.
Okay. Right. So, and, but at the same time, in particular, something that celebrates our steeped Mexican-American history in, in our city and coming together with maybe another type of event, in particular, something that celebrates our great food history in our city would be another, albeit very separate kind of group that really might have a vision for that. And then as it relates to art downtown or uptown or in public parks, that's kind of a, another group in my mind. And I'm not sure that, you know, we, and then the other question is, do we have to have an official designation in order to pursue bringing in, you know, musicians or recruiting or going to meetings and, and assisting? So far, I know we haven't had to have one. So that's where I'm trying to find is what is the, what is the focus? If the goal is to get, establish a board similar to sights and sounds, this is the third time we've said sights and sounds now, then, then I think that's a, that's a noble goal, in particular a citizen goal full of stakeholders in the community, which is Councilman Rizzo's point. That's a fantastic goal. I'm not sure that, you know, that the council or, you know, a few of us would, I don't know how much help we would be to Pie in the Sky. I don't know that I'd be able to be a whole lot of help, but I know Councilman Schill would be maybe five times as much help or more than what I could be. But I, that's, that's really what I'm, that's what I'm trying to define. Do y'all want to think on it? And then we'll bring it back and, and, and take another swing? I just want to make sure whatever we do, we've really thought it through. Is that okay with everyone?
Sure.
All right. Anyone want to add anything?
Just to reiterate what Rick said, Pie in the Sky does belong to you. So, you know, you're the architect on that, so always remember that we're just trying to help. We're, we're not trying to take over. I don't want you to feel that way, so just know that, we're just trying to help.
We're definitely not trying to take.
Oh, no.
Yeah, no, no. That's a lot of work.
I think, I think, I think, I think another thing that we think about when we're, when we're talking about this particular task force is programming. We talked about how do we have consistent programming and bring people to and appreciate our downtown area, our different areas throughout our community? And I think that's something that we really need to concentrate on, right? We want programming that's going to be successful, we want consistent programming, we want people to return, we want to create a consistent piece that people come to every year. The Pie in the Sky is one of those things, but we need more. And that's what we've identified as a group. Thank you.
All right. Is that okay with you, Councilor Schill?
Oh, yeah, no, I'm fine. And, you know, Sarah knows how much I appreciate everything she does and, and I'm willing to help her in whatever aspect she needs. So, yeah, no, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that and we'll just, plus I don't think I could wrangle all those pilots, those balloon pilots? Uh-uh. Nope. I'll leave that to Sarah.
Proud group from what I hear.
Oh, yes.
That's all right. That's all right. All right.
Back to seventeen.
Kathy, I'm going to bring back up item number seventeen.
Kathy Rager, Stormwater Management Plan Administrator for the City of Kyle. Item number seventeen is a culmination of draft ordinances from the Drainage Master Plan, doing plan reviews and things along those lines. So these are just some suggestions that we've kind of been documenting over the last couple of years of suggestions of what we would potentially like to add to some of the ordinances. I don't know, y'all do have the sheet, it's, it's just a Word document that's written in draft. I don't know if y'all want to go through each one right now. Pretty much they affect chapter seventeen, chapter fifty, chapter thirty-two, and then there's that miscellaneous one that I don't really know where it would fall just yet that has to do with drainage issues that we find during construction. How would y'all like?
I guess I'm confused, have we not?
This is just more of a discussion of potential ordinance updates. And so y'all have a list of them in your packets and we could go through each one if y'all want me to read the different ones.
I, I think, I mean, it's in the backup material. We've had chances to review it. I brought up my question with you already. I think I heard another question about it as well. So.
Yeah, I, I think at this point, it's really up to council. If you have questions, please ask them now. Otherwise, we'll take that as permission to move forward and bring them back as ordinance changes to our code.
I guess my question to you is that, do you have the direction that you need at this point with, with some of the questions that you brought forward? So we were to pass any updates that were, that were, that were brought forward, are you, are you good with that now? Is, is there some, some more work that you feel like we need to do and bring back to you? Because I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, if that's the direction for this after reviewing and agreeing with some of the changes that have already been proposed, if you want more direction, we can take this back and come back and I can start redlining and sending stuff to you in a different format if that's what we needed to do. Is that what I'm, is that what I'm understanding or is it?
Yeah, really, if you have questions or concerns, if you want to bring them up now, if not, yeah, definitely offline is fine. We'll be bringing these back as, as we work on them, so there's no urgency to this tonight as having everything final.
With some massaging of the multi-inspection requirements for commercial properties.
For sure. Yes.
And silt regulation.
And definition.
And silt.
Yes.
Policy.
You know, one thing though, that I did remember when it comes to silt, one thing that could make that tricky is the water quality ponds. If we remove silt, because water quality ponds, that's really the, the primary thing that comes out of there and that's the most expensive portion of maintenance of those structures. I thought about that and so it wasn't until I was sitting back there that I, I made that note to myself. So that's something that we would like to be mindful of if we do remove sediment and silt.
I think it looks, I think it looks at the plan pragmatically, right? Because we can't, we can't sit here and, and have a discussion and say that silt in one location is somebody else's fault. It's not, it's not one direction. You know, this is, this is a compilation of different things. It's a, it's all working together. So there's certain responsibilities for everybody along the line, not just, hey, it's coming from up, that's, that's not the case. It's not the entirety, there's so many different aspects to it. So I think we have to look at that to ensure that we're looking at it holistically and that everybody's paying in to maintain their appropriate liability and pieces. I think that educational piece comes forward to that, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Els.
So, what was this, last week that we attended the, over at Public Works, the, the three of us were there, Councilmember Schill, Villalobos and myself. That was really good and thank you, by the way, Leon as well, for putting that together and having us join on that. That was very informative. It made me want to, what was it, the Dutch? Yeah, it made me want to adopt the Netherlands policies there. But, you know, and, and I know we had this long conversation earlier and I know I was looking out in the crowd and people getting a little gray-eyed and out there, but this is a very important topic.
Yeah.
And it deserves our attention and deliberation and discussion on our drainage and flood mitigation and, you know, our infrastructure when it comes to those things. And it was highlighted in that workshop that we did. So I certainly appreciated that. We've been, had some folks from around the area come and attend as well, from San Marcos and various places. I did just want to give an appreciation in that same line of thinking, your item number twelve under section seventeen dash twenty-four, that City of Kyle is requiring the use of current five-hundred-year design storm in place of the hundred-year design storm until the full adoption of Atlas fourteen. And remind me of when they think that, because it's still a little ways off from that adoption, correct? From Atlas fourteen?
I think the City of Austin has adopted it, but they're still working on all of the details, their watersheds, they have a lot more watersheds than we do.
Gotcha. And so.
And also too, I think ours is, what is theirs, twelve point, twelve point six and ours is actually thirteen point two rainfall depth. So there is actually, our rainfall depth is actually higher than what Austin saw.
You're talking about their two zones?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, that was particularly interesting as well. So we just have the, the one zone and it's about thirteen or so.
Twelve point two.
Yeah, so very informative and I appreciated that discussion. I know they looked at a few different things about adding, what was it, a couple of feet or something to the hundred-year flood, but I think we're going above and beyond by doing the five-hundred-year flood. Because as the mayor brought up earlier this evening, we had two of those instances in less than twelve months, a handful of years ago. So I appreciate our attention to that. Leon, thank you. Mr. Barber, thank you for doing that. And certainly, if there are any more seminars or information pieces like that, please send those invites out. And I think council would certainly appreciate having the opportunity to sit in there and learn. I know I was just being a sponge and taking in a lot of that, it was very interesting information, so I appreciate that.
Councilor Schill.
And I do want to say thank you for adding the section that we don't have numbers for yet, the improper distribution of printed materials. So no more phone books or anything just thrown into the, onto the yard or driveway or, or porch unless it was bought by the homeowner. And then, and it's also not to, it, it excludes, you know, of course, US mail and stuff that's put on, you know, doorknobs and such, but yeah, no more phone books. I kind of like that idea.
And I do see that probably in the stormwater regulations.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I really do think that we can find a solution. It's, it, the problem is, it's just not going to fit on a piece of paper very easily, you know? Because that's, that's ultimately the solution that has provided the best, you know, outcomes for our sidewalks has been that we're, we have an official policy that's clear and then we're using resources to address that. I think that's ultimately going to be the silt question, that's going to be the Mason Wood question. We're going to have to adopt our actual policy that makes sense. And then, you know, because obviously despite Harper's best efforts, our Public Works Department is actually getting more and more capable. And they've been demonstrating that they're, they're, that we can ask for more and more from them. We've been buying, well, no, I mean, we've spent how much on stormwater machinery, you know? Harper knows the number, he won't say it. And, and so that, but that's, to, to me, that's kind of the tool that I'm looking at for being surgical. The way that we have been with our, with our sidewalks is to find problem areas that we can handle internally and, and start finding ways to address those issues. For example, if there is a, a particular area that has, you know, heavy silt buildup, we might be able to work out a deal to facilitate the disposal of that from the property owners at a considerable reduction in cost or an elimination of a cost depending on the circumstance. And so, you know, did we ever actually adopt a formal sidewalk maintenance policy that said, I mean, outside of the scope of it's the homeowner's responsibility? Do we ever adopt anything that says we're going to? I think we may have added some language, it said it was up to like a certain amount or subject to count, like the poly-level deal.
Yeah, it was the poly-level. Yeah, otherwise we left the ordinance.
Without doubt, the ordinance still says sidewalks are the homeowner's responsibility. But it, I mean, it's such a, it's such a symmetrical problem that it's kind of hard to, you know, it's different, but, but did we ever actually change our, our policy to allow for or to contemplate fifty thousand dollars a year of sidewalk repairs, repairs annually being circulated throughout the city, paid for by taxpayers?
Did.
No, I, I know we agreed to it. We funded it, and we authorized them to do so, but it, everything we did with regards to poly-level was in contrast to our actual stated ordinance that says sidewalks are not our responsibility. We understood that there was a middle ground there. So maybe whatever is, Kathy, could you, or Harper, could you find whatever we've, just, what have we done with regards to sidewalks through the years? As far as that middle ground, is there's anything that we've adopted? If you could help maybe find some, or somebody could find something and send that to council just so that we can kind of look and use that maybe as a, as a help? I'm sorry, I'm off of item number seventeen, but. Just want to make sure I'm understanding.
You're looking for a model to help inform you of this particular item you're?
Yeah, as it relates to item seventeen. Thank you.
It is.
Yeah, we just have to figure out. Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, but I'll have to figure out exactly, because, I mean, it is the same, but it's a little different. We all agreed to basically an outside contractor, and it allowed.
Right, but there was a, like, there was a vetting process. There was a scoring, like, we went through, like, we had a way that we developed to go through, and now it's working. We put maps up, and we said, this is what we're going to be doing next, so that when people asked and had questions, like, we can point to maps on our website that show. And obviously, stormwater management's different, but as, you know, we can give the list of, these are the CIPs that we're working. If you have a request, you can make it. We have a certain amount of resources that are allocated, in which case, you know, you can bring it to council, you, you know, whatever. There can be some kind of process for taking a finite resource of a certain amount and then using that to address some of these issues that we recognize that would be helpful for us to address, because if we don't, they're not going to get addressed.
So yes, you, yes, they are similar. The only, the major difference that I see is that the sidewalks, the majority of them are, are public, so that's the difference there. So you've got the private drainage. You didn't have easemented drainages. You didn't have HOA drainages. So you have all these different things where the sidewalk would just have.
They're, they're a public easement on private property, and the private property owners are one hundred percent responsible for the maintenance, and so.
So I've, I found your answer, I believe.
We, we, we passed something.
Yeah, there is ordinance number nine fifty-seven, which was passed in August of twenty-seventeen, and it basically states that all persons owning lots in the city upon the street shall keep the sidewalks around the same in good condition. In failing to do so, he shall be fined in any sum not less than five dollars nor more than a hundred dollars. But B, the city at its sole discretion may elect to facilitate the repair of any sidewalk within the city limits or authorized by agreement. The election of the city to facilitate such a repair does not remove the requirement upon the property owner to properly maintain sidewalks and in no way absolves the property owner from liability.
I think that's a great thing to add into this policy, nearly word-for-word, to say that there are circumstances where we want, we can, we want to help, and let's, let's, and then internally, so that's not the same as what we actually did. That's, that's the next step. And then internally, we, we worked out a deal. We found some value. In this case, it was, in that case, it was poly-level. In this case, it might be, you know, Harper's new toys. And it, or in particular, like, the ability to deal with silt, maybe in a more economical way or something that we can, something we can handle, you know, as opposed to nineteen million dollars. Like, we need to take that, and we need to bring that down to something, maybe even that's an ongoing, because that's the beauty of what we're doing with sidewalks, in my opinion, the poly-level. Every single year, we're doing fifty thousand dollars of repair to our entire sidewalk infrastructure based on which ones we've identified that we think we can work on. And I, I would assume the stormwater might be a different number that we assign to, to go, and, but a certain number that allows for us to address those things. We, I don't want to solve it now. I'm just trying to put ideas in your head for y'all to be thinking through, maybe a way to model it, because ultimately, this problem, we've had it for two years. We've talked about it for hours and hours and hours with multiple councils at this point in time, and we're still just circling, trying to land. We got to come up with something that is a hybrid, something that's creative, and I think modeling the sidewalk solution as best as possible may be the way that gets this thing off of our desk and so that we're out of your hair on these issues. Something to think about when I solve it now.
You know, the one that Sheil was talking about back in the, near Masonwood area and all that, that, that the HOA is defunct, you know, something like that would work great. But the others, where the property owner owns each of those backyards, that's, that's where we'll run into possible issues that we're going to have to try to work through.
It's what, but what she said's like, well, hey, they should definitely be mowing this, but there's an example where there's a bunch of trees that they can't handle. We can maybe look at a situation, have some discretion, and say, hey, we've got some funds here to, to make that, to make that repair without changing the actual policy, which is what we need to make sure we don't change, in my opinion, because I think it subjects us to liability, and it also, there's no, we have no way of actually budgeting for, we don't know what that means. You take silt out of this, what does that mean from a budgetary standpoint? And are you prepared to spend the money that is necessary to take on that responsibility of removing all the silt from all the stormwater infrastructure and every retention pond in the entire city? Because it's, if you change it in the ordinance, that's what you're agreeing to. But this, which is the same problem we have with sidewalks. I mean, it's a multimillion-dollar thing. We're like, we just can't do that. But what we can do is this little thing while we keep the policy intact.
The one thing that is different from the sidewalks to the, this issue is actually accessing it. You know, you can access all the sidewalks, but you cannot access without driving onto private property some of these easements, and that's going to be a challenge.
But that's not a problem, that's not a problem of the ordinance, because no matter what we ride, if we can't access it, then we can't access it. That's a legal.
No, but a good hypothetical is you have, remember how the, the homeowner owns this side, and the other homeowner butts up to it, they, they own this side. So let's say midway's in that block, there's an issue that the council says, hey, we want to, we want to help these people out, you know? And we say, okay. Each of those property owners, to get to that, we have to have their approval. And then, we can't even get into that drainage without the one or the other property owners there in the front allowing us in. So I'm just saying, the small things, the small details is what we're going to have to figure out.
Is there no, is there no ordinance that we can pass that gives us that access? Is that a state-level, non, you know?
I, I think the problem takes care of itself. If someone's asking for our assistance, they'll give us access through their property.
But if it's somebody further down, and they aren't that person, that's where the problem is. Because like, for example, that picture that I have, you actually have to access the, the two front, or, you know, the two properties here to get to the third property, or that whole tree line is multiple homeowners. So you have to get permission from these two to get to that person in the middle.
So are, are we, are we saying that if someone has grossly neglected maintaining their area, and you have debris in there, live trees, that's creating a drainage issue based on a definition that we can't have access? We can, I think we can, I think we have the authority and the ability to create, create access as long as we define it.
This ordinance actually takes huge steps towards that, giving us that.
If there's not a drainage easement, and Paige is here, but if there's not a drainage easement, then I would understand that, yes, we would be going on their, on their private property, so therefore, we'd have to get permission. We talked with Paige a year ago, maybe, about possibly getting us some kind of, she could draw up something that would, we could take to the homeowner and try to get permission, you know, go in, they sign and everything. And all of that is great until that person that says no, and then, then how do you get to them? If there's a drainage easement, we can get to it. We have a right to get to it, right?
So, so if there isn't a drainage easement, and you have something that's three inches or larger that's been there for several years at this point, that can create a serious issue in a drainway? The, the city that cannot, they will still have to ask for permission to go to somebody's property to get there and fix the issue? I, I think we have.
It depends on the circumstances. If the issue is a private property drainage issue that's causing damage to another private property, that's a civil issue between those two property owners. If it's not a city facility that's causing the problem, and if it's not a, if it's not an easement, that's a public easement for the city to.
Could we put an M U E through there to help us?
Yeah, if you are adopting a program similar to the sidewalks where, right now, the default is the property owners maintain those drainage ways, but if the city is looking at spending public funds from time to time on those issues, then you would get an easement to do so, and the benefit to the property owner is that then they become eligible for the use of public funds to try to help clean up some of those drainage issues as time goes on.
There's just a couple, right? There's just a couple over there behind Steeplechase. Can we put, can we do a municipal utility easement? Or do we have to get permission? Because it's not that they're going to say no, it's that they're, we're going to knock on, and they're going to be at work. We're going to leave a hanger, and they're going to, we're just, it's going to take, it's just too hard to get them to agree as opposed to, this is a good example of condemnation, you know, or unilateral.
The best thing would be to evaluate those areas that are subject to these issues and look at what's the best way to have an access point. The best way would be an easement, an easement for the city to access those points.
Do we have to have permission to create that easement as a city?
They have, it has to be granted to you by the private property, property owner needs to grant the city the easement.
We're back to where we started.
But then if we get granted easement, then we're responsible for it, right?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. Okay, okay. I'm just making sure.
It's just like the sidewalk where you, it's a, it's a public access easement, public right-of-way, but the property owner's responsible for maintenance. It's a similar, it's the same model.
But if I gave you, if I gave the city, if I was property owner and I gave you an easement, then more than likely, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I'm not going to work on it. It's the city's now. That'd be my thought.
Well, as soon as Kathy shows up at their door, they would be corrected on that, or whoever, you know? Kathy would be very judicious about it, I'm sure.
Still trying to get back to that point where we hold them a certain level of accountability.
Right, there has to be accountability.
There can't be, there can't be a, this can't be a free-for-all every single time that someone runs into an issue that there's some serious neglect, but.
Well, the same goes with the HOA. What if the HOA has an area that says, well, you know, okay, I'm going to back off, and I'm not going to maintain this, because the city will come in and do it. I'm just, I don't know.
Hybrid.
Definitely a tough issue.
All right, anything else? All right, City Manager's report.
God, I say, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Go home, go to bed.
Counsel, it was also recommended that a, another joint meeting be held between the City Council and the Plan and Zoning Commissioners. I'd like for you to check your calendars and let us know when you would like to have this, that meeting. Typically, the Pinesy and Howard's gone, but they will have their first meeting in the month. That is a very action, actionable meeting, and then their second one is more of a workshop. So they recommended one of those workshops the fourth Tuesday of the month.
March twenty-fourth?
Is March twenty-fourth spring break?
The twenty-fourth of March, yeah, is the fourth Thursday, uh, fourth, fourth Tuesday.
March twenty-fourth? Okay. March twenty-fourth, very good.
That was easy.
I also would like to give kudos to our Public Works Department that went out and installed these beautiful signs. No thanks to Harper.
Exactly. If you notice right now, they looked very shiny and bright the day they were put up a week ago, and.
Look at that clean sidewalk, too.
Yeah, I was going to say, who's going to?
I think everyone of them has been hit since, to be honest. I think people aren't used to seeing them in the roadway and make a driver error. One of them was completely run over.
After answering a couple of emails, might have just been hit deliberately, obviously, you know that.
I think that's also.
Might have got a couple deliberate hits on that.
You think so?
Yeah, I do, too.
I think it's still the, the issues that we're dealing with, the people distracted driving, doing things that are distracting their driving. I can tell you this, though, coming up and down here lately on this road, crossing the street, I can cross a lot easier the street, because the, yeah, a lot easier. I'm not playing Frogger on that street anymore.
You're saying because of these. Yeah, they, I noticed it, too. It just brought my attention to the fact that there might be people trying to watch. And this basically says, if you see someone, you need to stop.
Yes.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's right.
Right, that's true.
So they, they hit the sign all day.
Big thanks to Mayor Protem, Rick Koch, for suggesting it, even though they're getting knocked down. And I, I, I do, I agree that it's already had an impact on helping people cross the street.
Yeah, because people are actually stopping and letting you actually start crossing the street, too.
I noticed for the first time that there's an actual sidewalk striping up there by the railhouse. It's about an inch thick. So maybe we'll need to work on making that a little bit thicker. I had to look hard. I only saw it because of these, though. I'll say that.
Yeah, so Text dot has a striping contract coming up this, later this year, and they will re-stripe that for us.
Awesome.
Yeah, there, there's some other lane striping changes they're going to make through there also, so that'll just go into that.
I don't think that one's used very often, but obviously, this one here and then the ones, you know, over here are also used, milt. Right, exactly. So those are used a lot, so I'm, I'm glad we have them. Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, you're welcome. I, I am out of town Monday through Wednesday next week, but back Thursday. James will be here.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Anything else? Motion adjourned.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, second in back, Councilor Rizzo. Any further discussion?
Diane?
All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Nay. Motion carries six to one.